Good evening. I would like to call the Planning Commission meeting of September 9th, 2019, to order. Before we get started, I'd like to make one announcement, and that announcement is, is that at this point in time, we now are down to five Planning Commissioners, because as of last week, the Planning Commissioner, along with Commissioners that were with Ward Four, were vacated from their positions, because there is no longer a Councilmember in that position. So until that position is filled, then we will not have anybody from Ward Four representing the Planning Commission. Madam Secretary, would you please take role?
Commissioner Rivera.
Here.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Here.
Chair McLaughlin.
Here.
Commissioner Conno.
Here.
Chair for the Record, Commissioner Nguyen will not be in attendance. You do have quorum.
Thank you. Will you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Phil, let's begin.
(inaudible)
Good evening. I would like to call the Planning Commission meeting of September 9th, 2019, to order. Before we get started, I'd like to make one announcement, and that announcement is, is that at this point in time, we now are down to five Planning Commissioners, because as of last week, the Planning Commissioner, along with Commissioners that were with Ward Four, were vacated from their positions, because there is no longer a Councilmember in that position. So until that position is filled, then we will not have anybody from Ward Four representing the Planning Commission. Madam Secretary, would you please take role?
Commissioner Rivera.
Here.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Here.
Chair McLaughlin.
Here.
Commissioner Conno.
Here.
Chair for the Record, Commissioner Nguyen will not be in attendance. You do have quorum.
Thank you. Will you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Phil, would you lead us?
Ready? Begin.
(inaudible)
Thank you, Phil. Okay, first of all, I would like to go through some meeting protocols. First, I will outline the process for a public hearing, so that everybody knows what to expect. Staff will provide an oral report and answer questions from the Commission. Public hearing will be open. The applicant will give, will make a presentation, limited to 15 minutes. Members of the public will then take, will then be called to speak. Individuals will be limited to three minutes, and groups will be limited to however many people they're speaking for, and there'll also be three minutes. Public hearing will be closed. Discussion of proposal will return to the Commission with formal action taken to approve, conditionally approve, deny, or continue review of the application. Please consider the following suggestions when organizing your comments. Please state your name, and the address, and your address, that can be done voluntarily. Your position on the item, and your testimony. Statement that will include pertinent facts with your knowledge. Avoid gossip, erosion of repetition, or repetition. A clear, concise, non-repetitive argument is most effective. Thank you. We'll now move on to public comments. At this point, does anybody have an item that is not an agenda item for this evening, that they'd like to speak on? Hearing none. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the Planning Commission minutes from August 26th?
As moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 4-0-1 absence. Do we have a motion to excuse the absence of Ken Nguyen? Motion? Second?
Second.
Second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so it's 4-0, with one absent. We will now move on to the business calendar. The formal action by the Planning Commission shall become effective after a 10-day appeal period unless the City Council holds a public hearing on the matter. Then the formal action will become effective on the day following the hearing and the decision by the City Council. An appeal from the decision or requirement of the Planning Commission must be filed with the clerk of the council, and a copy sent to the Planning Department within 10 days of the date of the Commission action. The appeal may be made by any interested party, individual, or group. Now we're going to move on to the public hearing, and right now, today, we have seven items on our agenda. What we're going to do is, item number one that's on our agenda, we're going to move back to item number six, and then we're going to have items one, two through six, we're going to do that first, and get them out of the way. They're all pretty simple tasks on our part, so we want to be able to get them out of the way. So what we'll do at this point in time is, this is the time and place to consider item number two, conditional use permit, number 2019-29, for the project located at 414 West Fourth Street. Decision on this matter is final unless appealed within 10 days of any interest, by any interested individual or group. If you wish, if you wish to address the Planning Commission, please fill out a request for speaker card. No person other than that, that no person will be allowed to speak unless they have filled this out. Before we begin, do any of the Commissioners have anything to disclose at this point in time on this item?
No.
Okay. Good enough. Please go.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Up for discussion tonight is conditional use permit, number 2019-29, for Egan Barbecue, which is located at 414 West Fourth Street. The applicant is requesting approval of CUP number 2019-29 to allow the sales of alcoholic beverages, beer and wine, on premise consumption. The photo shows the restaurant as it appears today. The site is located on Fourth Street. It's between Ross and Birch Street, and it's right across the street from the Federal Courthouse. This slide shows the, it shows alcohol storage and display areas in red. The areas are less than 5% of the overall floor plan. The site was approved in 2013 for alcohol sales as a part of a restaurant, but the approval expired after two years, so the restaurant never opened. The project will provide an added service to the residents and visitors of the area. Conditions of approval and standards in the Santa Ana Municipal Code will mitigate any potential negative impacts. And finally, operational standards and proposed license will maintain and save, a safe and attractive environment in that neighborhood. And with that, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit, 2019-29, as condition, and I would be happy to answer any questions the Commission may have.
Okay, thank you. Does the Commission have any questions of staff?
I think one of the concerns that I had before was how have we approved the permits of alcoholic beverages around these areas, especially since it was two years ago. I'm sure two years, but there were a lot of changes. I just wanted to see if you guys had any data as to how impacted that area is for alcoholic cells at this point, alcohol cells.
Thank you for the question. The Police Department analysis of the project shows that it's within the normal realm of activity in the area. Downtown is naturally the highest, one of the most dense parts of the city, and naturally generates one of the most calls for service for the area. But because this location was previously approved, and they never opened, and this is kind of a formality to bring them back for reapproval, we don't have any data to show how this particular location, let's say, impacted the area, because it never opened.
I was just checking, like, we had a map before with those areas where alcohol was sold. I was just kind of curious if we had that for around this location.
That is something that we typically provide when an applicant is proposing off-sale, like a liquor store. It's not something that's typically provided for on-sales, so there's no map for this particular project. Sure.
Just on that item, it's my understanding that one of the conditions is that they will not have outdoor dining, therefore, no alcohol will be outside.
Thank you. Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, and that's consistent with several other restaurants that are along the way?
So, there are restaurants nearby that have outdoor dining. Some do have alcohol outside, some don't. This location, staff is proposing a condition that would say that even if they did have outdoor dining, that there would be no outdoor service of alcohol as a proactive means of addressing the nearby education center.
Okay, so there's no outdoor service, there's no outdoor seating available. Correct?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Any other questions of staff?
I think the staff before talks about, it's going to be that outdoor dining is provided, then the ceiling alcohol will help you lap it.
Correct. Right.
There could be outdoor dining.
There could be outdoor dining, but it would be limited, too. Was it not to hours?
Yeah, if they have the hour here.
I mean, the, I think the issue that Angie's also bringing up is the fact that on one side is Nova, which is a charter school, and on the other side is the after-school facility, and they're all within walking distance of the restaurant, so. Okay, go ahead.
So has the applicant asked for weekend service? I mean, on the weekend, the schools are closed, so are they able to do that? Is it prohibited on the weekend to serve and to provide alcohol on the patio? Or is this just blanket?
At this time, they haven't even requested outdoor dining, so we don't know if they're going to come back and request that, but the conditions are proposed to mitigate if they do.
I think, I think one of the realities that we also have is the fact that it's Korean barbecue, which means you've got a cooking element that's in the middle of the table, and I don't think they're going to have that outside. It's only going to be an indoor-type situation, so that may preclude or make it impossible to do that. Okay. Phil, is it? No? Okay, thank you. Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
We have not.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open. Would the applicant like to speak on this item? Is the applicant here tonight, Ally?
(inaudible).
Okay. We have no, no speaker cards on this at all? Okay. Since there are no more speakers, does anybody want to speak on this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing at this point in time. We'll bring it back to Planning Commission. Does anybody like to make a motion on this item?
I have a motion to approve the cell, approve item CUP number 2019-29.
Okay. Phil? Second? Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 4-0-1 absence, Ken Nguyen. This is the time and place to consider item number three, conditional use permit, number 2019-30, conditional use permit, number 2019-31, variance, number 2018-10, for the project located at 301 North Tustin Avenue and 325 North Tustin Avenue. Please note, decision on this, on this matter is final unless appealed within 10 days of, by any interested individual or group. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please fill out a request to speak card with the Secretary. You'll have three minutes. Before we begin, does any of the Commissioners have anything to, that they wish to disclose with regards to this item? Yeah. Yeah, I did, I did have a telephone conversation with the, with the owner, the developer of this project, just to talk about the overview of the project. That was about two weeks ago. No? We're doing the car wash. Okay.
I also had communication with the developer to review the project.
Okay. All right. Selena, it's your, it's your presentation.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Tonight before you have a proposed project, which entails demolition of an existing service station, convenience store, and an existing car wash. In lieu of this, it would be construction of a new 3, approximately 3,000-square-foot convenience store and service station at 325 North Tustin. Also proposed would be construction of an automated car wash at 301 North Tustin. You may recall this project site before you, back in 2018. It was part of a general plan amendment, a zone change, and a proposed project for a drive-through and commercial establishment on 301 North Tustin. So here's the project vicinity map. The project site is located at the southeast corner of Tustin Avenue and Fourth Streets. To the north, you have commercial uses, a gas station and retail center. To the west, a gas station and another retail center. To the south is the city of Tustin, and a medical office building. It's also adjacent to the 55 freeway to the east, and the city of Tustin further to the east. Here you can, are some site photos. The top photo is 325 North Tustin, which shows the existing car wash and service station, which is proposed for demolition, and then reconstruction of a larger convenience store and service station. And then on the bottom is 325 North Tustin, which is the southern parcel. It is currently a vacant lot. It was previously a restaurant building, which has been, since been demolished, and is the proposed site for the automated car wash. Here you can see a table with the development standards of the C2 general commercial zone. Both the car wash and the service station and convenience store properties meet the development standards, with the exception of the front yard requirements, which is a 15-foot setback along the streets, and it's proposed to be reduced to 10. This is the variance amendment. A variance was previously approved also in 2018 for these sites, and I'll go over that later in the presentation in more detail. Here before you is the site plan. We have the existing, or the proposed gas pumps, new convenience store, and car wash building. Renderings of the site. And here's the convenience store floor plan and elevations. It carries through with the previous designs, which is a contemporary design, same materials as previous as well, which is stucco, smooth plaster, metal trellises, green screens, and wood tile. The, a new application or entitlement that the applicant has since applied for is for 24-hour operations of the convenience store. Per the municipal code, any retail market that's less than 20,000 square feet, that's proposed to operate between 12:00 and 5:00 a.m., does require a conditional use permit. The operation, 24-hour operation, seven days a week, is similar to other convenience stores, such as 7-Eleven, that have received similar entitlements and have similar conditions of approval. The nearby uses are, there are no nearby sensitive residential uses. It's commercial, again, to the north, south, and west. And this 24-hour operations will provide an ancillary service to the community with expanded hours of operation, and generate additional sales tax with the expanded hours of operation. And here you can see the floor plan of the car wash tunnel, and the car wash elevations, again, carries through a similar design of the convenience store. The car wash requires a conditional use permit in the C2 zone. The new automated car wash will replace the existing automated car wash that's at 301 North Tustin. The site was designed to provide adequate queuing on-site, so the drive-through, or the drive-through queue lengths to line up for the stacking for the drive-through are placed at the rear of the site, away from the site driveways, providing any queuing onto Tustin or Fourth Street. The stacking lane for those vehicles waiting to enter into the car wash exceeds the city's stacking requirements. In addition, a traffic study was reviewed and approved by the Public Works Agency in regards to the new operations of a car wash on this site, or the nearby intersections and freeway on-ramps, and it did not produce any impacts, as proposed. Also, in regards, regards to noise, the project has been designed with a concrete block tunnel to dampen noise. The blowers and dryers within the tunnel are set back 15 feet from the exit, and the vacuums are located at the north of the car wash, away from the commercial, I'm sorry, medical office building to the south. In addition, there are conditions of approval for a noise study to be conducted prior to certificate of occupancy of the car wash, and one year after operations. Limited hours of operation, and prohibition of use of the air guns, or air guns or amplified speakers outside of business hours. In regards to the variance, in 2018, a variance was approved very similar to this one. So this is a variance amendment. The variance was for reduced yards at 325 North Tustin, and this will expand the variance to 301 North Tustin. The area circled in red here, you can see that 15 feet is required. There's also a two-foot dedication required by the Public Works Agency, so that takes away from the buildable square footage of the lot, reducing the setback to 10 feet. And you'll note that lot configuration, which is consistent with the, along the freeway to the north, or to the east, so it cuts across the site, making it a regular-shaped lot. And then the, I'm sorry, the last point there is, this reduction in the landscape setback allows for the vehicles that are exiting the tunnel to adequately make that turn to go exit the site or use the vacuums. And with that, that concludes the staff presentation with the recommendation to approve the conditional use permits and variance amendment.
Thanks, Selena. Does the Commission have any questions of staff?
I have one question.
Go ahead. Phil?
For the driveways entering into, off of Tustin and off of Fourth, is that both going to be right in, right out?
On Tustin, it would allow for full-turn movements, and on Fourth, it would just be right in, right out.
Okay. So just Fourth Street, right in, right out, and the other side is both, both ways?
Correct.
Okay.
There's a question I've got. It's, it's probably along your lines, too, Take. But there's, there's a statement in there that talks about the irrevocable offer of dedication along Tustin.
Yes. If I may, I just wanted to modify what Selena said. So the northerly driveway is right in, right out. I'm sorry if I didn't hear that correctly. So on, on Tustin, the northerly driveway is right in, right out. Fourth Street, the single driveway is right in, right out. The southerly driveway on Tustin, you can turn left out.
Got it. Okay.
Okay. Yes, the irrevocable offer of dedication on, on Fourth Street is for a future turn pocket onto the freeway.
Okay. That's why that space is open at this point in time? I mean, if you look at the map, I mean, it says it's open.
There is a, it's, as you, as you proceed east along the lot frontage, we get to an eight-foot irrevocable offer of dedication. Beyond that, I'm not sure I understand.
That's at the corner, right by the, right by the 55 entrance, right there.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's it. I was trying to figure out what that was, because it was, I mean, if we look at this project versus what it, what was presented to us in 2018, a couple of things stand out. They've moved the car wash in the back, where the restaurant was, and they, in the old rendition, it was the car wash was in the front, and then it was a drive-through restaurant in the back.
I, I don't remember all of that well. I do remember the condition for the irrevocable offer was in place at that time.
Ms. Selena, is that?
The previous proposal did not include a car wash operations in 2018.
The previous one?
Right. They currently have a car wash on-site. The 2018 proposal did not propose a car wash. It proposed a drive-through restaurant with, a drive-through restaurant at the rear of the site.
And the car wash was going to remain there?
No car wash in December. There was no car wash in December on the application.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Okay, thank you, Selena. Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
We have, and those have been distributed and posted online.
Okay. Now it's time for the public hearing to open. Does the applicant want to speak on this item at this point in time?
Good evening. I'm Richard Finkel with Bundy Finkel Architects, speaking for, for the project. And I wanted to say, this project has been quite an effort, working with city staff, to try and get this dialed in exactly the way staff wanted it. In fact, we had a different plan originally, where the car wash was on a different location on the property, and staff had made recommendations to relocate the tunnel to where we had put it now, to the, to the shallower portion of the site. As Selena was mentioning, we have an unusual site condition where it tapers to the south. So the, the variance that we're proposing was actually due to the fact that, in working with staff, they felt it was better site circulation, better orientation to relocate the tunnel. What we did manage to accomplish between this project and the original one, which I'm actually very happy about, is the original variance was to have much less landscaping on the corner. The gas station itself, we were not able to achieve the 15-foot setback on either Fourth or Tustin at the corner. Now, we've replaced what was a pretty substantial variance to have less landscaping at the corner, with that small amount that you're seeing at the south end of the property. But if you look at the corner, we managed to put most of the landscaping at that corner, which I think is where we would like it. As a designer, I love the idea of having that corner embellished, and the only place that we lost any landscaping, if you look at the plan, is that very small portion at the rear. And that credit all goes to your staff. They work with us very closely to try and reduce these variances down, get more landscaping on the property, improve the site circulation. My owner was also in discussion with the dental office to the south with us, who expressed a lot of concerns about noise and vibration. Again, working with staff, they said, can you pull the car wash building farther away from the property line, give them more space? Is there anything you can do to mitigate noise? So again, my client was very agreeable to this. He wants to be a good neighbor as well. We moved the building farther off the property line. We took a wall that was an open wall of that tower, closed it off, which is why Selena was saying, the, the vacuums or the dryers are now 15 feet back from the end of the wall. They're buried into the tunnel. It was more because we closed the tunnel in. We put eight-inch concrete blocks, solid, grouted, which is an amazing acoustical barrier. So now those vacuums are much farther into the project. No vibration from these vacuums. They just pull in exhaust air. So there's not going to be, we feel our acoustic report supports us. There's not going to be concerns about noise or vibration. So I did want to commend staff, because Selena has been so patient with us. We've been in this, in the city for quite a while with this project, and Min, and Selena, everybody in Public Works Traffic has been terrific to work with. So again, it wasn't an easy project to work with staff, because there were a lot of challenges, but they made it very easy, because their intentions were clear, and it was just very good working with them.
Okay. Thank you, Richard. Do any of the Commissioners have a question of the applicant? No? Thank you. You do, Phil?
Sorry, quick question. Is there any complaints? Is there any complaints right now? Because there is a car wash there now. So is there any complaints about the noise now?
I couldn't speak to that, because that wouldn't have come to me. But the existing car wash is actually where the pump islands, they're just on the right
But if you look at the corner, we managed to put most of the landscaping at that corner, which I think is where we would like it. As a designer, I love the idea of having that corner embellished, and the only place that we lost any landscaping, if you look at the plan, is that very small portion at the rear. And that credit all goes to your staff. They work with us very closely to try and reduce these variances down, get more landscaping on the property, improve the site circulation. My owner was also in discussion with the dental office to the south with us, who expressed a lot of concerns about noise and vibration. Again, working with staff, they said, can you pull the car wash building farther away from the property line, give them more space? Is there anything you can do to mitigate noise? So again, my client was very agreeable to this. He wants to be a good neighbor as well. We moved the building farther off the property line. We took a wall that was an open wall of that tower, closed it off, which is why Selena was saying the vacuums or the dryers are now 15 feet back from the end of the wall. They're buried into the tunnel. It was more because we closed the tunnel in. We put eight-inch concrete blocks, solid grouted, which is an amazing acoustical barrier. So now those vacuums are much farther into the project. No vibration from these vacuums, they just pull in exhaust air. So there's not going to be, we feel our acoustic report supports us, there's not going to be concerns about noise or vibration. So I did want to commend staff because Selena has been so patient with us. We've been in the city for quite a while with this project, and Min and Selena, everybody in Public Works Traffic has been terrific to work with. So again, it wasn't an easy project to work with staff because there were a lot of challenges, but they made it very easy because their intentions were clear, and it was just very good working with them.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Do any of the commissioners have a question of the applicant? No? Thank you. You do, Felix?
Sorry, quick question. Is there any complaints?
Almost got away.
Is there any complaints right now? Because there is a car wash there now, so is there any complaints about the noise now?
I couldn't speak to that because that wouldn't have come to me, but the existing car wash is actually where the Pump Islands, they're just on the right side and very far away from the dental office. And in fact, there was that restaurant that separated the dental office from the car wash, and I'd be willing to bet the raves and other things they were having in that restaurant were probably more an issue than the car wash ever was. But again, I can't speak to that.
Okay. That was my one question.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have three speaker cards. I'll start with Yun Hi Cho.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Yun Hi Cho. I'm the owner of 171 North Tustin Avenue Building, right next to 301 North Tustin Avenue, proposed site for car wash. I have been practicing dentistry over 27 years. I always strive to do my best when it comes to taking care of my patients. My primary concern is treating my patient with utmost care in gentle, peaceful, and caring atmosphere. Ever since I heard about a big automated car wash business coming instead of a shopping mall, which I was told before, I've been very worried and anxious about it. Unlike other businesses, dental office is extremely sensitive, not only to noise, but to any movements or vibrations. Simple procedures such as taking digital x-rays, cone beam CT, or even taking impressions are very delicate and require no movements. Other treatments such as fillings, crown and bridge preps, root canal treatments, surgical implant placements, and restorations all require highest accuracy and precision. Any movements or vibration that created by the big automated car wash could have a detrimental effect on the outcome of the dental procedures that I perform daily. It will be a big problem if I cannot treat my patients because of this car wash business. I also have a tenant who has a massage business. Massage place has to be very calm, peaceful, and relaxing to his customers. With all the noise, movements, and vibration from car wash, he may not be able to give proper treatments to his customers. He said he may lose his customers and may have to close his business. So at this time, I am opposing the project. But if the project has to move forward, I would like to know if you can modify the plan so that parking lots will be next to our building instead of the car wash conveyor. Thank you.
Thank you, Yun. Bill Conklin?
Chairman, my name is Bill Conklin.
You're not, okay. Cara Grant?
My name is Cara Grant, and I represent William and Karina Conklin. William and Karina own Speedy Wash, which is located at, I'm sorry, Speedy Clean Express Car Wash, which is located at 2035 North Tustin. Earlier today, we submitted written comments in opposition to the Russell Fisher Project, particularly CUP 2019-30. We thank the commission for the review of our opposition. We worked very hard to compile this in a very short amount of time because this Russell Fisher project, quite literally, could have a very devastating effect on the Conklins' business. We request ultimately that the commission deny the CUP, which would allow for the development of an express car wash at 301 North Tustin Avenue, for the reasons discussed at length in our written comments, but which I'll mention briefly here. We also request that the city or the commission conduct environmental review under CEQA, as the project is not exempt categorically as an infill development project. If the commission still wishes to consider approval of the project, we request that the hearing be continued 120 days because the notice was insufficient to provide affected owners, like the Conklins, adequate opportunity to protect their rights. As background, the Conklins purchased the property and Speedy Wash in 2017 for several million dollars. They quite literally invested their entire life savings into this business. Speedy Wash is located only 1.2 miles from the Russell Fisher Project. They plan to operate Speedy Wash as a family business and one day use it to provide employment for their autistic and hearing-disabled son. They've invested in the city of Santa Ana as well by investing in this very expensive business where Karina grew up, here in Santa Ana. Unlike Russell Fisher, who owns six or seven other car washes, the Conklins own this one. The commission should deny the CUP because it does not meet the five required, all five factors required for approval. The project will, first of all, the project will not provide a service or facility that will contribute to the general welfare of the community. In fact, approving the CUP to allow another express car wash within the city will inundate the car wash business within the city borders. There are already 13 car washes, express or full service, within the city, and another one, another express wash, has just been approved.
Okay, your time is up.
Okay.
So if you want to wrap it up, please do so.
Yes. As set forth in our written comments, the five factors required to approve the CUP have not been met. The project is not exempt under CEQA, and environmental review should be, is required. And again, if the commission still wishes to consider the approval of the CUP, we request that the hearing be continued 120 days so that they can adequately prepare, review the documents, consult experts, to protect their rights and their business. Thank you.
Thank you, Cara. Does anybody else want to speak on this item at this point in time? Hearing none. Public hearing will come to a close. Yes?
I would like to speak.
Okay, please come up here and fill out a card. You can speak first and then fill out a card. Anybody else at this point in time that wants to speak? This is our last speaker. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ronald Jones. I was previous owner of Speedy Clean Car Wash that was sold to Mr. Conklin. I'd like to give a little background and history on the project. My understanding that back in 2016, this property was identified in the general plan as medical or office. And being in the business for 45 years, I'd heard rumors that Mr. Russell was thinking about putting a car wash, or redeveloping that car wash there. This is back in 2016. I approached the city, spoke to the gentleman that he was working with at that time, the planner, and was assured at that time that this was not going to be a car wash, that this was going to be a strip center that was put in there, and that there was no plans to go forward with a car wash. I went in and talked to the planners at the council, or at the planning office, at the desk, and told them my concerns, and they said, no, there's no way that this could ever become a car wash. So this has been a, the fact that it has now come to you as a car wash means that this was a planned process, to get through the whole process, to get the general plan modified so that it could become a commercial development, and then come back and resubmit it to you as a car wash, which was the original objective. I've been in the business for 45 years. There are too many car washes in Santa Ana. The fact that you guys just approved one on 17th Street by the old RB Furniture Store is already going to do damage to Mr. Conklin. Having another one within one mile is just going to split the business that he's doing and make all three of them unsuccessful businesses, which will result in you having three businesses that are no longer properly maintained and are going to become eyesores in the neighborhood. So I'm expressing my concerns as a citizen in the area. I have lived in the area for 20 years now, 25 years, and I'd like to see the businesses successful. And this, the approval of this is going to result in three unsuccessful businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please fill out a card with your name and address and? What's that?
[inaudible]
Okay. All right. On the matters that have just been discussed, does the applicant have anything to say, or would the applicant like to say anything at this time?
Oh, good evening. Chase Russell, owner of the Car Wash Fund at the Fourth and Tustin. I'd like to answer any questions you may have.
Do you have any questions? Do you have any comments relative to the?
Yeah, in response to the dental office, we've been working with both members of the family. Actually, we pulled their building back an additional, I believe it's additional eight inches to give them that setback. We're building concrete block construction to ensure there is no sound, and actually with car washes, there is no vibration, so that's not really a worry. In regards to our competition, all of our car washes are inundated with competition. We've had a car wash there for, I think it's been since 1972, so all we're doing is making our location better.
So the car wash that's currently there on the corner of Fourth and Tustin Avenue has been there since?
I think it's 1972, if I'm not mistaken.
1972?
It's been there a very long time.
And it's, and your family has owned it, or other people have owned it?
We bought it in 2015.
Pardon?
We bought it in 2015, or sorry, 2015.
Okay. Any other? Hey, go ahead.
I just want a clarification on the comment that was made, that there was some discussions that you were not planning on bringing a car wash in 2016. Do you recall that conversation?
Well, actually, yeah, at the time, the conditional use didn't work with the car wash. We had to pull a CUP, and we had, it was professional zone at that particular point in time. It took, this process has taken four years to get to this point, so we ended up resubmitting because the retail center did not make financial sense.
My one question of staff in this is that, from the standpoint, there was a comment made about waiting for zoning to change. Has the zoning changed on this, or has it always been professional and commercial?
It has been changed.
Pardon?
The zoning has been changed to commercial, C2.
That was one of the actions you took back last year as part of variance, is also the Zone Change General Act Amendment cleanup, that I believe that Selena mentioned earlier in her presentation, when it came back before you last year.
Okay.
So it's not commercial.
And before that, it was?
Professional.
Professional. Okay. All right. Any other? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, at this point then, we'll close public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the commission. Does the commissioner have any, commissioner have anything to say or comment on this item, or do we have a motion?
Do you remember, Mark, they were asking for 24 hours back in December for the convenience store?
Selena, I think the, I think we had, at the time, the original proposal was a drive-through restaurant?
So the 24-hour operations are proposed for the convenience store, and that was not part of the previous entitlements, it's a new application.
What was it before the 24 hours?
The applicant would be able to speak to their hours. I can ask the applicant on specifics for their hours. If it's not after 12:00 AM, I'm not sure of the specific time.
Okay.
I'm just concerned about the having the convenience store open with the new convenience store after 24 hours, so I don't know how you guys feel about that.
You know, so.
I think that if anywhere it's going to be 24 hours, I think that's an ideal location because it is by a freeway, it's stop and go, it's not in a neighborhood. So, I mean, I have found myself sometimes in the city looking for something open after hours. I don't think we have many. How many do we have in the city that's open 24 hours, convenience stores?
The vast majority of them.
Most of them are?
I mean, it's like 7-Eleven-type situation.
Okay, so it's nothing new.
Okay.
I'm hesitant about the hours of operation, that's I think concerning.
Well, okay, we can talk about that as a condition if you want to do that. Any other questions, comments from the commission? Go ahead, Seth here.
If we start, I think that recently, something that married it was the 7-Eleven over off of Daisy. We were looking at hours of certain operations and so forth because the neighborhood for itself called for that in regards to safety. But I think that in a bigger scope, for businesses to be competitive and for us to start placing conditions on hours of operation when they're not in an area that perhaps they should be, begins to concern me, to start doing that to businesses when their competition is allowed to be open 24 hours. But there are exceptions, like I said, with 7-Eleven, even though they're a dry store, we still put conditions on them because of the safety of the area being a concern. So I would not be supportive of putting conditions on time.
Okay. Felix?
Yeah, I agree. I wouldn't want to do a condition for the hours, not for the convenience store.
Okay. Any other comments?
The noise, it says, just confirming, it says there's going to be a study for the noise. Is that, when is that done? Is that done?
So based on the condition, it's done after the first month of operation, and then again, a year afterward. So it's two times, and based on that, we can help evaluate, because the first month would be, you know, obviously less business activities. The goal for the one year is that they're well-established, and we'll be able to review that at that time.
Okay. Go ahead.
Then, in regards to the noise study, you know, the car wash over on 17th Street went through a lot to get to where they needed to be to meet noise requirements, and I think it was Ellie that went out and listened to it in Redondo or somewhere out there, and do we want to keep a certain standard? I mean, if that's acceptable for a neighborhood, here you're in a different type of area. Do we want to be consistent and do that, or are we asking for something different from that?
We're not asking for anything different. The code stipulates what noise level are permitted in this zone. Our goal of the noise studies to confirm that they are operating within the noise, allowable noise level in that zone. So we're not allowing anything more or anything less. It's more much, more of confirming, and if it's operating higher, then we would work with the applicant and operator to make changes so that it meets the noise standards.
Okay, thank you. Bless you.
No, the, okay, the only thing I guess I'll talk about here is the fact that, I mean, if everything meets the basic criteria that we set forth from the standpoint of zoning and everything else, I mean, it's hard for me to disallow something to happen because of competition. I mean, I think that we have competition in everything we do. And so, you know, I'd like to say that, you know, it's something to think about, and there are, you know, maybe more car washes, more Starbucks than we should have in the city, too. But at this point in time, I don't think that that should be something that we have to consider as part of the decision. It's based on land use and what we're doing with respect to that process. So having said that, is there any, is there any motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit 2019-30 as conditioned, variance number 2018-10 as conditioned, and permit number 2019-31 as conditioned.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any comments on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Four zero, one absence. Can the win? We'll now move on to item number four, conditional use permit number 2019-23 for the project located at 1825 East Newport Circle. Decision on this matter is final unless appealed within 10 days by any interested individual or group. If you wish to adjust the planning commission, please fill out a speaker card, and you will have three minutes to speak. Does anybody have to make any disclosure on this item at this point in time?
No.
Okay.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the planning commission. This next item is on conditional use permit number 2019-23 to re- This next item is on conditional use permit number 2019-23 to renew the entitlements of an existing wireless facility located at 1825 East Newport Circle. Um, as previously mentioned, this is a CUP to renew the entitlements of an existing monopole major wireless communication facilities, um, to renew the entitlements for an additional 10 years. Um, no additional height increases being proposed for the particular tower. Some additional equipments are being proposed as part of this application, so they are swapping some of the antennas and adding new ones and some additional equipment as well as being replaced. Um, the applicant is proposing to add additional landscaping to the front of the property and I'll go and show that in the couple of slides. The subject site's located off of Newport Circle. Um, it's right off of the 55 freeway. Um, the shaded green area shall depict the location of the site and then the location of the tower is circled by the, um, red, um, highlighted portion. Um, as mentioned, the applicant is adding additional landscaping and some of the fronds will also be replaced as part of this application. So this is an enlarged site plan. As mentioned, the, um, tower is located at the front of the property and you could see some additional shrubs that are being added by the applicant. Um, as proposed, the site will continue to comply with SAM and Sipico standards and as previously mentioned, the applicant is adding additional landscaping to try to enhance the, the, the site and all the equipment will be screened adequately and as mentioned again, uh, additional fronds are being, um, proposed to help with the, uh, stelving of the facility. Um, with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve CUP number 2019-23 S. conditioned and I'll feel free to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Jerry. Does anybody, uh, any commissioner have a question of staff? Good, thank you. Madam Secretary, have we received any correspondence on this item?
We have not.
Okay. Uh, the public hearing is now open. Is the applicant here and would they like to speak?
The applicant is here.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Alexander Liu with Core Development Services representing Crown Castle. I'm really just here to, uh, answer any questions that you might have. Uh, there's not really much to add from, uh, Mr. Guevara's staff, staff report and presentation, so.
Okay. Do we have any questions of the applicant at this time? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I have no other speaker cards on this item. Uh, since we don't have any more speaker cards, we'll close the hearing and we'll bring it back to the commission. Does the commission have any action they would like to take on this item at this point in time?
I'd like to make a motion for approval of the conditional use permit number 2019-23 to renew the entitlements of an existing 60-foot-high major wireless communications facility.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Felix. Any discussion on this item? Okay, we'll go to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero, one absent. Can the win? It's time, place to consider item number five, conditional use permit number 2019-24 for the projected, uh, for the project located at 1544 East Avenue, East Warner Avenue, excuse me. Uh, please note the decision on this matter is final unless appealed within 10 days of any interest, uh, by any interested individual or group. If you wish to address planning, please, uh, fill out a request card. Do we have any disclosure that we need to make at this point in time by any of the commissioners?
No.
All right. It's yours, Vince.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners. This is a request by the Wine Exchange to, uh, get two new licenses for their facility. Uh, quick history on the Wine Exchange, they've been in the city since 2012 where they first started off as a internet wine sales. In 2014, the planning commission approved an ABC license for a type 20, which is beer and wine. They're here before you this evening for a type 21, which is the distilled spirits. Uh, they want to sell the specialty, I guess they call it the brown, the brown drinks, the, the rums, the, um, I'm not a drinker, so sorry, but the rums and, not tequila, that's white, but the rum kind of drinks, the dark drinks there, sorry about that. But they want those darker drinks and they want to sell the specialties, the high-end types of, of alcohols there. That's not a wine, so therefore they need the type 21 license. Then they're also asking for a 42 license, which is on-premise license in order to operate a tasting facility in their building. The tasting will only be for the wine because the type 42 is beer and wine only and they don't sell beer, but the wine will be tasting through this type 42. So basically, they're asking for the sales of the, the distilled spirits and then have wine tasting on, on the facility. Uh, here's a quick overview here. They're within the Brook Hall Office Park, up in the very northeast corner of the site. Their little, their building's surrounded there in a circle, black circle, 12,000 square feet. Again, been there for seven years. It's a SD zoning designation, which allows a combination of office uses and retail uses along the freeway and it's surrounding uses there, as you can see, industrial to the north and to the west, and office and commercial, uh, within the Brook Hall Park. And then you've got the freeway, the 55 freeway to the, to the east, I guess it'll be southeast a little bit there. And here's our floor plan. Nothing's changing with the floor plan. They may do some tenant improvements to kind of enhance it, but the wine tasting's going to be right there in the center of the building with a little, uh, private tasting area there. Uh, it's going to provide another service to their, to their users, to the consumers there by adding wine tasting, bringing specialty wines, have wine manufacturers can come in, do tasting, uh, functions there. Um, we have some standards in place, you're going to mitigate any potential, uh, impact, which we don't see any occurring out there. They're not asking for any licenses, they already have a type 20 right now. They'll surrender that type 20 beer and wine and take the 21 in this place, so it's no additional licenses in the area. And then they're in a commercial center and they're compatible. They also need a public convenience and necessity letter, it's a PCN letter. They're in a census tract that has very few residents and licenses are allocated based upon number of residents and census tract. Uh, what's allowed out there, because it's so low, they're allowed one ABC license in that area and there's six currently right now. So what they need is also is a PCN letter, but again, that's just a, it's not a new license. This is a different use, in a liquor store type of use and, uh, we're asking that you authorize the issuance of that PCN letter as well and the, the staff is responsible for writing that letter. So with that, uh, you have the PCN letter recommendation plus also recommend approval of the CUP. Thank you. I can answer any questions that you may have.
Does, Miss, Cynthia?
So does, by adding a new service with the wine tasting, does that, it does not require them or there's no issue with parking?
No.
There's enough parking?
There's over 1,200 parking spaces out there.
Okay.
We're in the area, there's probably 100 and some spaces. Um, I've been there on a couple occasions, spot inspections and they've, there's never been a parking issue whatsoever, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of Vince? Nope? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vince. Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
We have not.
Okay. The public hearing is now open. Does the applicant want to speak on this item? Is the applicant here today? Mr. Cho.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, staff and community members. My name is Michael Cho of Palmary Tyler. Uh, I represent the, uh, owners of the Wine Exchange. Uh, what we're here tonight is for upgraded privileges. They currently, as Vince had noted, uh, have off-sale privileges for beer and wine. Uh, they'd like to add distilled spirits because right now, uh, as Vince tried to explain is, uh, brown spirits are becoming very popular. Uh, your, basically your whiskies, scotches, uh, you know, your, people are looking for specialty whiskies like a Pappy Van Winkle or a lot of the Japanese whiskies and so this, uh, the ability to sell specialty distilled spirits, uh, goes hand in hand with their selling, uh, specialty, uh, high-end wines also. Uh, additionally, the addition of the type 42 would allow them to have a tasting area much like a lot of the Bevmos or Total Wines or Pavilions have in their stores. Uh, and, um, if you looked at the diagram, it is within, uh, the confines of the space. Uh, there's very little construction that needs to be, uh, done because those walls are already there and that's currently just display area. I have the applicant, or the owners of the business here, if you have any questions regarding operations, but, uh, we want to thank staff for working with us on this application and we hope that, uh, you can vote for recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Does anybody have any questions of the applicant? Cynthia?
Can you remind me of the hours?
Uh, the hours are very limited. Uh, the latest they're open is until 6 o'clock in the evening and I believe they are open from, uh, Monday to Saturday, 11 to 6, and Sunday noon to 5. So they're tip, they're not open in the evening, so even if they had a tasting, uh, you know, tasting is going to end, you know, latest at 6.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Uh, I have no further cards on this item, so at this point in time, we'll close the public hearing and we'll bring it back to the planning commission. Does anybody want to make a, uh, motion or comment on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve CUP number 2924 and the PCN letter that you're asking for.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero, one absence, can the win? Now it's time to, now it's time and place to consider item number six, conditional use permit number 2019-25 for the project located at 3309 South Bristol Street, Unit B. Please note the decision on this matter is final unless appealed within 10 days by any interested individual or group. If you wish to address the planning commission, please do so. Fill out a speaker card. Before we begin, is there anything commissioners want to disclose? All right.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the planning commissioners. This next item is on conditional use permit number 2019-25 to allow the establishment of a second-hand store known as Eco Town at 3309 South Bristol, Unit B. So as mentioned, this is a conditional use permit to allow the operations and the establishment of a second-hand store. The SAM and Sipico does require CUP for second-hand store as well as pawn shops. The subject site is located within the Bristol Plaza. Um, the tenant space is approximately 1,800 square feet and was previously operated by Michaels and Spirit Halloween and since then has been vacant for almost a year now. The site is surrounded by single-family homes to the, um, east of the subject site, but then there is a buffer about 40 feet that serves as a fire lane and then their loading dock operation is also towards the rear of the property. The next slide just shows the proposed site plan, so the applicant is going to be conducting some minor tenant improvements, the installation of some shelving and some improvements to the, to the restrooms. As mentioned, their loading dock and all the merchandise will be, um, loaded through the rear of the site, so nothing will be conducted, um, at the front of, of the, um, facility. And the applicant is also proposing to install security, um, gates as well as some shoplifting, um, censoring devices at the door and they're all also proposing to have an onsite security guard. This is the site photo, um, as proposed, showing the proposed signage that's going to be installed, um, which is going to be reviewed under a separate permit, so this is not exactly the sign that will be approved. Um, in addition to that, the applicant is proposing to conduct some minor exterior improvements as well. Um, in terms of the applicant or the proposed business, it's Eco Town and we're a bit excited. This would be the second store established in California. The first store was opened in Fountain Valley a couple of months ago. Um, but Eco Town is a well-established location in Japan and they have over 800 stores. Um, so their per, primarily their business model is they pretty much purchase goods or unwanted, um, materials or supplies or, or whatnot, um, from individuals and then they restore them and then they resell them. Um, this is why they need a CUP for, um, a second-hand store. Um, this will provide an additional service to the general vicinity and with that, it does comply with the SAM and Sipico standards. We are imposing some additional conditions of approval to make sure that this application does not deviate, um, as proposed. Um, some of those conditions of approval contain language to prohibit outdoor storage and display. Um, this location would not be allowed to accept bulk donations, so no large appliances or furniture. And, um, in addition to that, they are required to obtain a second-hand dealer's permit, um, from the police department, so the applicant has been in contact with the police department and is currently in that process. Um, with that, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit number 2019-25 S. conditioned. I'll feel free to answer any of your questions.
Does, Commissioner? Go ahead, Cynthia.
I've never heard of a second-hand permit by the police department. Can you explain what that entails?
So the state requires all second-hand stores and pawn shops to go through a second-hand dealer's permit and that is to assure that they're not selling goods that were stolen. Um, so there's the lengthy process, they go through, um, fingerprints, life scans and whatnot and it's a very rigorous process in terms of what needs to be documented by the, uh, by the store and then reported to the police department.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jer. Felix?
Yes. Um, I just want to clarify something here. On page 63, it says that it will provide additional dining options for the community, um, like they providing dining options?
I'm sorry, couldn't hear that.
I was confused by the thing that says they will be providing additional dining options for the community.
I think that was a typo.
That was a typo.
Yes.
Thank you. Which should it read?
Retail options. Merchandise, not dining.
Yes.
This is not a dining.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Apologize for that. Thank you for the comment.
Good catch. No further questions for Jer? Okay, thank you very much, Jer. Madam Secretary, have we received any, uh, written communication on this item?
We have not.
We have not.
Okay, thank you. Now it's time for the public hearing to open. At this point in time, would the applicant like to come down and speak? Is, yes, please come on.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Aki Sasaki. I'm, uh, representing the Eco Town. Uh, Jerry pretty much, uh, told everything that, uh, we want to cover. Uh, we are going to open the 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, uh, regular business hours and, uh, seven days in a week and, uh, we are hiring about 20 to 30 people, mostly part-time job. If there is any other question, please let me know.
Do we have any questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Hearing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Does the commission have a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve CUP number 2925.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Felix. Okay. Any other comments? Hearing no comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, one absent, can the win? Okay. With that, now it's time and place to consider item number one, commis-, uh, conditional permit number 2019-01 and minor exception number 2019-01 for the project located at 4405 West Edinger Avenue. Uh, please note, decisions on this matter are final unless appealed within 10 days by any interested individual or groups. If you wish to address the commission, please, uh, fill out a request for speaker card. And does anybody have anything to disclose at this point in time with regards to this item from a commissioner's point of view? All right. And who's presenting?
Selena.
She might have stepped aside for a moment. Okay, if you can have a couple minutes.
We lost Selena?
Do you want to pick second?
I'd rather not.
Okay.
Because I think there's going to be some questions on that that.
Understood.
And I think it's more of a staff versus the commission and, and here's Selena anyway. Okay.
Tonight before you have conditional use permit 2019 and two, uh, dash one and minor exception 2019 dash one. The project includes demolition, a proposed demolition. The project includes demolition, a proposed demolition of five single-family dwellings, construction of a new approximately ten thousand square foot community service building, in addition of a hundred and ten seats to the church mezzanine, and reconfiguration of the parking lot with a total of a hundred and fifty-six parking spaces. Again, it requires approval of a conditional use permit, a minor exception, and under staff administrative process, a lot merger would be processed to consolidate the lots into an approximately two point three acre parcel. Here on the screen, you can see the subject site, which is on the north of Edinger Avenue in New Hope. The project site existing church is shown in red, and the shaded red are the areas where the expansion would be and demolition of the single-family homes. The subject site is Zoned R1, which is single-family, and allows for churches with a conditional use permit, and the general plan designation is low-density residential. Also, for some context, you can see here the nearby community of Little Texas. It's comprised of approximately sixty single-family homes. It has the historic use of being used for, or with the houses having livestock, chickens. It has rolled curbs, and it's kind of a rural neighborhood within the city. Here are some site photos. The top one, you can see the existing church building as seen from Edinger Avenue, and the bottom photo are the existing ancillary residential structures on the church lot as seen from Regent's, Regent Drive. The church has a long-running history in the city. It was originally approved as part of a conditional use permit in the early eighties, and in the late eighties, but a conditional use permit was approved to construct the church as currently seen today, the church and parking lot. In two thousand and three, there was an application to expand the church, which was approved by the planning commission but denied by the city council. And most recently, in January of two thousand and nineteen, you may recall, this proposal came before the planning commission for the existing proposal, which is before you tonight, which is the CUP and minor exception. At that time, based on the comments received during public comment, the commission directed the church to work with the neighborhood and residents to address the comments and concerns. So we're here before you tonight to overview what has happened since the meeting, and to provide a brief overview of the project, as there may be some new commissioners. So here you can see the subject site plan. The existing church is highlighted in red. The new community service building would be located directly to the north, with the courtyard in between. There would be a new driveway on Edinger Avenue, which would provide for through circulation on the site, and expanded parking areas, for a total of a hundred and fifty-six parking spaces, which would accommodate use of the exist, of the church and additional a hundred and ten seats. Here's a rendering or aerial photo from, of what would be seen of the entire campus, which would be the church and the new community service building. And here, a rendering of what would be from the internal parking lot of the new community service building, which you can see would have similar architecture to the existing building. Since January, previous to that, there were a series of community meetings which were held with either staff, the applicant, and the church. Most recently, so since January, as included within the staff report, there was an exhibit which the church has submitted with measures that they've taken since then. They've included security patrols for parking monitoring during church services, use of New Hope Elementary School for overflow parking, parking logs of the existing parking lot and New Hope Elementary School, temporary signage, messages to the congregants, and the outreach letter, which was sent in April to the nearby community with a community liaison and contact information for the church. In June, a, the church arranged a meeting with the neighborhood of Little Texas, and to listen to what the comments were from the neighborhood, what, what, based on the implementation measures that have been done. And generally, the consensus or summary of the meeting was provided by the church, but the comments received were still in opposition to the expansion of the church in regards to change to neighborhood character, parking, and concurrent use of the buildings. In regards to parking, the project still does meet code requirements. It actually provides eleven more parking spaces than required by code. There's a condition, condition of approval to limit occupancy of the community service building, and the church to not be used simultaneously. And as previously done with the report in January, there was a parking study conducted to survey parking on Sunday conditions, and found that there was not overflow parking. Since January, staff has received parking complaints from the neighborhood on several occasions, specifically during Holy Week, which is a larger special event, different than regular Sunday services. As such, conditions of approval have been added to the CUP in regards to these special event occasions when overflow parking conditions were observed. And just a general overview of the conditions that are provided with the CUP. It's to prohibit use of a basement used for services that would be used for storage only, to provide off-site parking arrangements for unexpected overflow conditions within a half-mile of the project site, parking monitors during church services, temporary signage, a solid masonry wall along Regent's Drive to separate any access for pedestrians or vehicles between the neighborhood and the church site, and maintaining a primary point of contact for the neighborhood and the church. Parking management plan to be submitted to the city for special events. Then also, a parking study would be conducted six months after issuance of certificate of occupancy, and review the church annually for three years. New or revised conditions based on the special event conditions of the church would be that staff recommends, modify conditions to provide the parking management plan, any, to advise the city of any special events or large services annually, so we would be prepared for those ahead of time, and also to increase the amount of time needed for staff to review that parking management plan. In regards to the minor exception, the height limitation within the R2 zone is twenty-seven feet, or two stories, and the church is asking to exceed that in portions of the roof where it would be needed for the arches to support, which go with the architectural style of the building. So not the entire building, but just portions where the arches are, in order to meet building code requirements. And also wanted to point out that others, minor exceptions have been granted for similar situations with churches within our city. And with that, that concludes staff's presentation, and we're open for, here for any questions.
Okay, does the commission have any questions of Selena? Yes, Cynthia?
So, under community input, June, when they met, that was two thousand and nineteen, right?
Correct, two thousand and nineteen.
It says two thousand and eighteen.
It's on the screen, it's been corrected.
Since June, from that meeting, how many calls have come in in regards to complaining about parking?
Since June, I've not received any phone calls or emails.
So it was only January to June that you received? January, two thousand and nineteen?
January to August. So there were some emails and comments that were submitted in, during that timeframe, but most, the only ones with conditions that of parking were during special events, which was April. And then also, you did receive comments that were attached, or provided for tonight's meeting, which were more recent complaints. Another thing that was brought up at the last commission meeting were any calls for service for PD, and that's noted in the staff report, that as of the date of the staff report, we did not receive any, and also no active code enforcement cases.
So the, the comments, the complaints that we received for today's meeting were new to you because they had not been sent in prior?
Correct. There were a few that were received prior, but it was in April, and then on two other Sunday conditions.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Felix? No?
For me, you mentioned there would be security as part of the conditions here?
Yeah, as part of the conditions of approval, and one of the implementations since January, the applicant has hired a private parking and security patrol, which has monitored the church site, the New Hope site, and the neighborhood.
Do you know the times that this security patrol is hired from?
Yeah, it's, it's on Sundays, on regular services, at seven thirty AM to one PM during services.
And that's just Sundays is when they have services? The community center, I'm guessing, is going to be used throughout the week as well?
Correct.
So my question is that, you know, we started this conversation back in January, and we postponed it for six months because there was a lot of differences in the opinions between the people in the neighborhood and the church, and we said, let's go work these issues out. Now, staff has done some activities there, and you followed up with a few things. Are we at a point in time where all of the concerns that existed have been taken care of?
No. There are still differences of opinions between the neighborhood and the church in regards to operations.
There's still?
Differences of opinions and opposition to the project, parking concerns, noise concerns.
And where would they be? What, what are those differences of opinions?
I'm just saying, you said between the neighborhood and the church, so they did have a meeting, and they don't, you know, fully agree, and there wasn't fully a plan that was vetted out. For staff's perspective, they meet all of the code requirements that are required for the church in regards to parking. There were no, no new noise complaints on file with the city or code enforcement complaints, so we're still recommending approval.
So I guess I'm a little bit concerned about where we are and what we've got, because it was my thought that when we postponed this, we had talked about, I think I had proposed three months, and Candia proposed six months. And we said, would that be ample time for the, the church staff and the community to come up with solutions that all would agree to? Now it's in front of us, and I'm hearing that I don't think we have agreement.
So, based on the current application that we have, the proposed expansion and the proposed operation is meeting the city zoning standards. In terms of parking, the site as proposed will be exceeding the code requirements. In terms of their interaction with the neighborhood, they did, as staff mentioned, reach out to the neighborhood. I believe that there is not complete congruence between what the neighborhood think is appropriate and what the code that we need to evaluate as a planning commission, based on the zoning standards. So the parking issue, this project is being proposed to meet parking requirements and exceeding it. There are conditions within the approval that will allow the city to continue to monitor and review the project, should there be impact from the proposed operations of the expansion. The meeting, I think, did not resolve all of the issues in terms of how the neighborhood sees the operation of the church, and how the city, as by land use regulations, sees the operation of the church by operation of law.
Cynthia?
So, if I understand and I'm listening correctly, there's two big issues from the community. One is, they'd like to preserve what their community looks like. On the flip side, the church owns that property and has the right to change, because they're the owners of that property. But with the parking, they're exceeding it, so there should be no reason why they're parking in the neighborhood, other than special events. And for those special events, I don't know, just to identify it, I mean, I, I believe there, a request in here, a condition is to receive their annual calendar, the beginning of the year, so that the neighborhood could be noticed, I mean notified. Perhaps for those events, they pass out little flyers that say special event, and they put it on their window shield, so the neighborhood would be on notice, and then they do that, so they remember, oh yeah, it's a special event, because special events aren't going to happen all the time, it's on a special occasion, so that there is some mindfulness and good neighborly showing that they're respecting that. I mean, I believe there's also an overflow parking lot. So there really is no reason to park in the neighborhood. And that, I, I really want to like hone in on, because parking for anybody in our neighborhoods is like location, location, you know, it's golden. So I really want the church to respect the neighborhood in that sense. They will be changing the face of it because they have that right, but I really want the neighborhood to be able to be free of chaos every weekend with parking. So what can we do as a commission to assure that that is not going to happen?
So, the conditions that are proposed by city staff are conditions that actually help to look at some of those potential future situations to where there might need to be alternative for managing the parking. One of the condition is requiring a parking management plan for special events, as you mentioned, and we will be reviewing that with the church to ensure that those parking management strategy will be mitigating the impact of parking to the neighborhood. The applicant has, in the past six months, made some changes, even with the existing churches now. If considered and approved, some of these conditions will be formalized and will be part of conditional use permit. And in terms of future review, the city planning commission always has the option of reviewing the impact of the project, even while it's in operation, even after the approval of the project, so that there will be continued monitoring available. We believe that the conditions put in place will help to address some of those unforeseen concerns about special events, and be able to work with the applicant to address the neighborhood's parking concern and overflow near the neighborhood.
Now, I did see that the church has, in good faith, tried different things and put up signage, and I applaud you for that. But as a planning commission, do we have the right to say, as a condition, no parking in the neighborhood after construction is completed, other than special events, and that the neighbors would be notified? Because there's an abundance of parking here, and they have an overflow. Why do, so first of all, is that allowable?
So parking, we can stipulate that the applicant is required to provide parking onsite, which they have met. The applicant is required to provide a parking management plan for special event, that is something that we can impose. In terms of on-street parking, it is a public parking, so anyone could potentially park in the public street. But I think through the parking management plan, through working with the applicant, we can provide a mark parking management plan that addresses their special events, so that it would avoid people parking in the street. Now, the only way to really specifically address on-street parking, the tool that we have in the existing ordinance is to consider permit parking or some type of regulated parking in the neighborhood.
I know that we have signage for like, street sweeping days, you know, no parking allowed on. Is that an option to say no parking on the weekend from seven AM to one PM? I don't know, would that?
That is, but it is also, would be impacting equally to the residents as well. So hence, most, most city consider looking at parking permit for residential, and then providing the additional parking regulations on top of that, so that it addresses the differences in the type of parking.
Did that come up at all from the meeting, as an option from the community or the church? In conversation?
No.
No. Were there any suggestions that came out of the meeting? There was eighteen community people that attended. Was there anything proposed to the church? I mean, it just seems kind of, they met and what came of the meeting?
Right. The applicant, I think, would be better at explaining, you know, their process, it was really a meeting that the applicant held with the church, and staff was there to observe. But I believe in the format that the meeting that they tried to have, no substantial feedback or comments were provided to the church.
I think there were some other conditions that were added to in response, as you see, you've got the special event parking plan, you've got parking monitors onsite.
But I was just curious to hear what, if the community expressed, I mean, they were here expressing, and that's why, you know, Mark, I think, did the right thing by saying, let meet and come back to us. And I feel like we're back here with nothing.
Yeah, I mean, and.
There's nothing proposed between the two, other than the efforts that the church tried. So it, it's, it's a two. So, it's a two-sided, and it needs to work together. They both need to be neighborly with one another, and so I'm looking for what is on the table, then? What is every, that's something that would be workable, because it's hard for us to sit here and make a decision when nothing came back. We have nothing to work with after you guys met.
And my, I mean, you brought up yourself, Min, you know, you will work on a parking management plan, but my expectation coming into this discussion was that that would be part of the presentation. I mean, we would see a parking management program that the neighbors would say, "Yes, we agree," or "No, we don't see that this is a particular, you know, way it would work." I mean, it's granted that there's ample parking, if you take into consideration, I think the difference, one difference I heard was, I think there was a, an agreement between the elementary school and the church. Now it's a formal agreement, I guess, if I read the documentation, it's a formal agreement now. But I don't see any, you know, I don't see how that is, has helped or hindered the situation, because again, we don't have this parking management, and it appears that parking is one of the major issues that's existing in the neighborhood. That's one of the major, it's not the only issue, but it's one of the major issues. Some of the other issues had to do with time events, you know, how long did events go at night, and how late could they go, and things like that. You know, there was also discussion about, you know, special events versus the normal church events, and both units were not going to be used at the same time. Yet I saw something that said that it sort of led you to believe that you could use both of the facilities at the same time. So, here we are, six months later, and I'm not sure we are any better off than what we were before, based on what was just presented by staff.
I think the ability to work with the applicant on a parking management plan is something that would have to be completed, and it's generally done before occupancy for the church. It gives them enough time to work with staff, to look at options, also negotiate off-site options as well. You know, it's often challenging to obtain all of that before they go through and complete the entitlement process. But there is the obligation that that has to be completed in order for them to be able to receive occupancy of the expansion. So generally, that is how we look at the parking management plan and allow time for the applicant to come up with, you know, some of these additional leases and possession of a property.
Yeah. I mean, but here's the other concern that I have, and that is, is that just recently, there was a project that was brought in front of council that we approved. But when we were given that particular proposal to approve, it was an affordable housing project on First Street, there was no parking management plan. We asked for the parking management plan, and there was none to be had. Yet when it went to council, council said that the planning commission had approved the parking management plan, which we didn't, because we didn't see it. And I really don't see going forward with a proposition like this to council and say, "Well, you know, your deal, you look at the parking management plan." That should be something that we should be resolving at this point in time, and it's not the only thing, but it's what is cornered, and to me, it's the underpinnings of this entire discussion right now. I mean, barring the fact that parking in Santa Ana is, you know, always been a reasonable issue to have, no matter what the construction was, the fact is that this one, I think, has a reasonable solution, but it just doesn't seem to be, it doesn't seem to be, you know, adhered to by the church, at least from the neighborhood's perspective. And I think if we had some adherence, maybe we'd have a little bit different situation.
And I would agree, because the existing conditional use permit does not have any of those protection in place that would allow the city to step in and address parking concerns, where the proposal, with the regulatory opportunity we have, we will be able to compel the operation to address the concerns as they, you know, if they occur and when they occur.
Okay, Cynthia?
You know, you mentioned, Min, that it doesn't have to be part of this, the parking management plan. But this has been going on since August of 2017, and since then, there's been three meetings with the neighborhood. I just think that, you know, individual projects do, you know, need a parking, a management plan, and this is one of them, and it's a huge part of it in order for the church to move forward, and I think we'd be doing a disservice to both of them with what we have tonight, because there is no resolution. They still don't know what would happen, and the church is, I think, kind of in limbo, because they don't know what's going to be imposed on them, if it's agreeable. So, it's really difficult for me to pretty much move on this project without something more concrete in a parking management plan, because it's vital to the church project working for them.
I mean, here's what I like to do at this point in time. I mean, we've had the presentation from staff. We have a lot of people here, we have a lot of speaker cards. I think that maybe what we do is we go through and come to the end of the public hearing, go and have a public hearing, then end the public hearing, and then come back and decide what we want to do, just to see if there's any new information or old information, or it's the same information that we've covered in the previous meeting, if that's okay, just to move on. Felix, Cynthia, okay? Selena, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
We have, and those have been distributed and posted online.
Okay. And with that, we'll open the public hearing, with the applicant like to speak at this point in time. And you have fifteen minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Selena, for presenting your application. Thank you, Chairman, thank you, Vice Chairwoman, Planning Commissioners, and all city staff present with us this evening. Archangel Michael Coptic Orthodox Church...
Give me one second. Could you, I didn't, maybe I didn't catch it, but who are you?
My name is Maryam Solomon, I'm a representative of the church.
Okay, thank you.
I'm also the applicant.
Okay.
Archangel Michael Coptic Orthodox Church has worked diligently over the past nine months to mitigate the parking concerns of the neighbors. This has resulted in multiple improvements. The construction of the project, which will increase the number of parking spaces, will further alleviate their concerns. I would like to identify the steps the church has implemented in terms of its policies and procedures. Firstly, an annual lease contract has been signed with New Hope Elementary School for off-site parking on weekends for the church, and the parishioners use New Hope Street to Edinger Avenue as a path of travel to access the church property on foot. A parking monitor committee was also established to log and track parking flows on Sundays for both the church and the elementary school parking lots. To further regulate the parking on Sundays, the church has hired Patrol Masters, a security company, with vehicular patrol to issue citations and monitor the neighborhood, including the elementary school parking lot. It is important to make everyone aware, the security guard has been equipped with body cams that record all events with timestamps. Both the parking monitors and the security guard have provided us with written reports detailing who, what, when, why, and how, that would cover everything that happens throughout their shifts. The security guard doesn't just monitor the parking, but also provides security and safety for the neighborhood and the church. Furthermore, temporary no-church parking signs have been placed along Richardson Street, West Lilac Avenue, and South Gate Street. And within the church, announcements and notices are sent to parishioners to carpool and let them know which areas they may or may not use to park. The church has also invited the neighbors to contact one of our priests and have provided them with his personal cellphone number and email, guaranteeing a direct line of communication with a church liaison. And finally, in order to have an open line of communication, the church has had, to date, four meetings in total with the neighbors. To our knowledge, out of a hundred and eighty or so residents, approximately twenty are in opposition to the church, and unfortunately, neighbors who support the project do not and cannot identify themselves publicly due to the mob mentality and out of the fear of repercussions they may face later. Furthermore, misleading images of the fire department vehicles blocking Lilac and Gates were emailed to city officials complaining about the church that had nothing to do with the church. The church has received no communications from the neighbors regarding current operations, though the church has provided a community liaison. But we were pleased to have received positive emails from neighbors expressing their support to the project, neighbors who have owned the property as early as 1979. Please keep in mind that it is critical to consider extraneous circumstances that affect this neighborhood in its entirety. An independent parking and traffic study report shows evidence that there are many cars parked on the street that are completely unrelated to the church operations. You may refer to this report that has been completed by Urban Crossroads, and the consultant is present here tonight. This report states this. Ninety-five cars were parked within the neighborhood streets on any given morning at 6:00 a.m., when there were no church services. Another ongoing factor, on a daily weekday basis, on West Regent Street, New Hope Elementary School impacts the area with traffic during drop-off and pickup times. Any parent would know what that queue of cars looks like. Multi-generational families living in the same property also contribute to streets being filled with cars due to each individual family member having their own car, and garages being used as storage rather than what they were designed for, which is to park cars. As this Coptic church applied for conditional use permits in the past, it has become an easy and obvious target of hateful rhetoric. The circumstances I have mentioned have nothing to do with this church. Yet, as I sat in the back of one of these meetings we've had with the neighbors, and unbeknownst to them that I am a church representative, I heard them tell each other, and I quote, "We will come after them with pitchforks and torches if we have to." And at another meeting, I was directly called carpetbagger, a term historically laden with racial overtones, well before it became popular in political parlance. We look different, we speak a language that is unfamiliar to many, and we have a church founded nearly 2,000 years ago by the apostle Mark, a follower of Christ. We are devout Christians, who love our church and love our neighbors, and choose to spend our time in prayer and worship. Yet, as some parishioners make their way into church, they are accosted with derogatory insults. This level of hostility and aggressiveness equates to nothing less than racism. There is no practical basis for their opposition, and what opposition they do have towards the church, the project, and our community is based on prejudice. This project exceeds the parking requirements, and the traffic and parking analysis that's part of this report proves it. In conclusion, I wish to state the following. The church, in good faith, has done more than what is required to appease the neighborhood, to fulfill its ordinance requirements, and to receive approval in this permitting process. We look forward to hearing a positive result from the planning commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, thank you. Okay. Together, right, okay. What time, how much time do you...
About 6:50, so I will raise my hand when you reach the table.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Dear respected members of the City of Santana Planning Commission, my name is Father Philimon Mikhail. I came to this church in 1986. I have been in America thirty-three years. I remember in 1990, when we wanted to build the church building, the neighbors opposed the church, their reasoning was that, at that time, that they are countryside. I remember the Orange Register newspaper published a headline, "Chicken or Church?" But thanks to God, and to the impartial view of Santana City Councils, that at that time, thankfully, decided to go with church, not with chicken. We built Archangel Church. The building now stands, as you saw, a beautiful landscape on Edinger. We're gonna extend, proclaiming the Christian faith, Bible teaching, God willing toward them. I lived in the house just close to Mr. Dear Ralph, a good neighbor to me. Whenever we were there to him, whenever he asked us as a church, we complied by his demands, I will not speak about it. We are very blessed by the wisdom of our metropolitan, the headquarter of our church, Metropolitan Serapion. Whenever congregation exceeds number, he plans, he sees the people where they are, because this church started to serve Orange County, all Orange County. Now we have ten churches in Orange County. Whenever he finds and adding people, he make a church to them. And for example, West Minister, few miles from me, a new building, a new church takes thousands, takes hundreds of people. We are looking not to overload the number of our church, but we are thinking how to make other churches. And also, our church, you know, brought up more than ten priests, and now they are serving these churches. I'm amazed and surprised that our neighbors are opposing this project for over sixteen years. We came here twice, three times. Our neighbors jumped to great lengths to fight our congregation one week of the year, which is the holy week, where they purposely display that are an awful image, as if we are blocking their neighbors by parking. And Palm Sunday, it is a very special day for the Coptic. People come from everywhere, even those who does not pray, come to pray, they are scared, it's something ritual. They are not familiar with our, you know, regulations and precautions and how we can take care of the neighbors. They might park in the neighbors. And I remember in 2003, the same pictures taken on Palm Sunday, they are blocking the neighbors, only one day, only one week, the holy week, fifty-two years a year, fifty-five, peacefully with them, but this day is the only day they are picking up on me. My children are accused that they are, you know, parking wrongly, they are accused of jaywalking. I am amazed. Jaywalking, we see by my eyes thirty-three years here, anywhere, there is jaywalking. When they saw one, it is Egyptian. Anyhow, I love my children. They have not to be labeled. My service in this church brought up many graduates, many professionals, many I will not enumerate. Just you remember, I'm honored that members of my church work here in Santana, and you might remember Shahir Gobran, who's an eminent parking traffic engineer in this city. Furthermore, the neighbors need to understand that our presence in this location, they deter the crime, increase the safety in the area. If they come back and remember when I came in eighties or nineties, the area, how it looks, no crimes, there's very safety and very illuminated. We also, you know, we are opening our church to them, to come. When they come, not to come to, we welcome them to come just to take pictures, you are crowded on the holy week. Run away in the streets, take pictures, you are blocking, you are parking in the streets. This they are coming to dealing with me. This they are coming to dealing with me. I am really sad. We are real Egyptians. We are Egyptians in birth, in nation, originally, but we are Americans by nationalities, and we pay taxes, and you are entitled to our equal rights under the Constitution of this great nation. We are total allegiance and states, we are one nation under God. This third time, our project is approved by every department of the city, as I heard, and we want to have the acceptance. We love our neighbors. We have a litany, prayers in our church. Every liturgy, every mass, I pray for the peace of the world, the peace of the country, the peace of the president, my neighbors, my coming in, my going out to have peace. By the way, I want to quote some of Mr. Donald Trump, our president, recognized the Coptic community. And first of June, it was a global day for the Coptic Christians. He said, I will not read all of it. He said, I have been, they are, the Coptic Church has been an integral part of fifth faith community. And June 1 marks the first global Coptic Day. It is my hope that today provides a renewed sense of purpose for millions of Coptic Christians in Middle East and around the world. He mentioned that he visited, Mrs. Milana visited the big church in Middle East in Cairo, but he, as a comment, he said, "As we commemorate the important milestone for members of the Coptic Church, we also honor those who have been lost due religious persecution and violence in Libya." I don't know, you remember or not, twenty-one Christians were killed. And now here, we are looking for the justice and the real, you know, I need to live as a good Christian here. We are, my administration will always defend religious liberties and work to ensure that people of all faiths are free to live and worship according to their conscience.
Thank you.
I might leave this.
If you could finish up, your time is done.
Anyhow, I want to just include with a small paragraph, it is not yet.
Small paragraph, just.
Okay, small paragraph? Sorry, sorry, my sir. Actually, I, you know, we spent thousands and thousands, hundreds of thousands on this project, and the length in that time is adding expense to me. I am looking for you to look for this project. I thank you, your privilege to let me speak in front of you. With respect, commission, I will pray for you, pray for our neighbors. God bless you, God bless United States of America.
Thank you. Again. I want to leave this to be included in the. Okay. I'd like to request that if every speaker gets up here and we stand and applaud and everything else, we're not going to get out of here in a timely fashion. So, in all due respect, you've done it a couple of times, let's call it the last time, and let's continue on with this discussion and bring it to a close. So, the first card I have is Father Filimon. This is the father, okay, got it, done. George Raghip. George?
Chairman, I'm requesting to speak at the end.
Okay.
Thank you.
Linda Becerra?
We meet again. Some of the father's comments, and I apologize, I did not want to bring this up, but since he brought it up, I don't find that racism is a thing to be put up before the planning commission. We're Christians as well, my husband and I, my family, and per the Bible, it says, "Love one another." Racism should not be a part of this in any way, shape, or form, no finger should be pointed. We have lived, my family and I, in our neighborhood since 1964. I grew up. When the church first started their planning to become a church in our neighborhood, my mother was still alive. She has since passed away in 2013, and from beginning to end, all the way down the line, us as a family, along with my neighbors, have opposed it. This isn't something new for us, however, we are tired of it. We do not want to continue the fight. Life is too short, we don't want any part of it anymore. I'm tired of going to church on Sundays or even during the week trying to go to my quilting classes and going down Lilac and just trying to make the exit out of our neighborhood, and it's wall-to-wall cars when they have funerals, where there's only one car allowed, there's no way a fire truck will get through, they're parking on the red zones that have been painted by the city. They are blocking the OCTD, and they do not have security out only on Sundays, which I know this, I've seen it, but the parking has not resolved even on Sundays. I don't know what time they open New Hope School parking for them to use it. I do believe, though, that it is open when we go to church myself, which I leave at 8:30 in the morning. They're not utilizing it, they're parking in our neighborhood. The only time we see anybody using the school for overflow is when we're returning home from church, which is around 11, between 11:00, 11:30. They jaywalk, oh my gosh, do they ever, and I'm sorry that they're even stating that nobody is doing that because they are. They're coming from the Fountain Valley borderline on Edinger over to the Santa Ana line where their church is located. I don't know about the rest of the group that's behind me that's supporting this, but I feel like we all, I'll reiterate, have spent more than enough time in our lifetime trying to come to a resolution with this, and I don't see it happening. They are taking up approximately one-fourth of our neighborhood in a quick guesstimate. That means going over around the corner in the main cul-de-sac that goes over towards the elementary school, they're planning on putting up a receding block wall. What does that make the other homeowners look at, a big block wall, where we've actually got other half-acre properties to look at?
Right, thank you, Linda. Please, again, I ask you. Sorry if I didn't say that right.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, ma'am. My name is Antron, and I live across the street from the church. Actually, I'm Fountain Valley side of Edinger, the east side of Edinger. I live on 11572 Edinger. I've been there since 1998, and the reason I've come up here is I, anyway, thank for the opportunity, and I come up here to expose the expansion of the church. For the reason is, for right now, you know, every time the church have mass or, you know, event, whatever, I don't know, how do you explain, special event, but just that regular weekend, right up front on the east side of Edinger, parking is forget it. You know, if you plan to have a gas or, you know, party, you might well forget it, you know, because the parking is always full. And then, you know, I kind of get used to it, you know, probably wait until maybe one o'clock, have a gas or something, but then when I heard the expansion, I said, whoa, wait a minute, you know. And I hope you guys realize this, so I just received a letter Monday. I said, wow, this is really short notice, you know, I put in four-day ops or just come up here and kind of express my opinion. And then, you know, Wednesday, I go outside to get my trash, because Monday was holiday, and Tuesday they pick up the trash, but they expand it to Wednesday. So, Wednesday, I put up the trash out on Tuesday, and then I pick up the trash Wednesday morning. I went up there, and, you know, they have, for some reason, they have a special event, probably a funeral or something, and, oh my God, the parking was real bad, and I just parked right next to the trash can. I don't know how the trash is going to pick it up, you know, usually when I put it, you know how the trash is, you got to leave two feet for it to pick up the trash. So, I, you know, I say, you know what, I'm going to go to the meeting. I'm on Fountain Valley side of the church, and I just want to express my opinion. You know, so I, on Wednesday morning, about 10:30, and this last Wednesday morning, and just for your information, you know, I took a little clip, and, you know, I don't know how they come up with, you know, with the parking, but the parking on the OCTA buses, you know, where they pull over, I mean, that thing was full. I had took a little clip here, and then the parking on the bus stop on the east side, where it's the corner of Edinger and New Hope, and it was full too. And I, you know, you ought to see the chaos, you know, actually, anyway, I hope you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Patricia Wells?
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I live on Regent Drive, I have been there for 20 years, and I want to say to the church members that I have, I'm an ESL English teacher on the high school level, and I have taught students from all over the world, including from Egypt, so I resent being called a racist. I am not. My main concern, I have a couple of concerns, and I think I speak for a lot of the people in the neighborhood, that we don't want our neighborhood destroyed, basically. Excuse me, we have a unique neighborhood, a horse property neighborhood, there are only two or three in the entire county, and it is an historical neighborhood, it has been there since the 1940s. So, it wouldn't matter to us if it were a church encroaching upon our neighborhood or a strip mall or Bill Gates and, you know, his operation. We want to keep our neighborhood intact. We have one main street in and out, one side is New Hope Elementary School with its staggered start and release times. The other end is where the church people park for their church sessions. They also have funerals, they have weddings, they have Holy Week, they have special events. It's not just Sundays and Holy Week, it's a lot of the time during the year. And if there were an emergency, both ends of that street could be clogged, and the police or the fire department would not be able to get down to, into the neighborhood. Basically, they've been buying homes with the goal of destroying the homes and expanding the church. Now they have proposed a community service center that will comprise five acres, which will wipe out a lot of our homes, considering each home has a quarter to a half acre. We don't want our neighborhood destroyed, we want to keep it intact. And basically, I think what we would like them to do as a church, or a strip mall, or whoever is there, is to leave our neighborhood intact and work with us to keep that neighborhood safe in the way it is. It's unique, we don't have streetlights, we don't have sidewalks, we don't have much drainage, it's very rural, and we want to keep it that way. We don't want commercial developments in our neighborhood. I was driving around today, and I saw a 10-acre parcel for sale across from Costco about two miles down the road on New Hope. That would be perfect for a church, they could expand as much as they want. We've heard they're going to plan to build an elementary school after this community center, they propose it will take five acres. Then what will it be, a middle school, then they'll want, they're not going to stop, then they're going to want a high school, and pretty soon our neighborhood will be destroyed, and we will lose the peace and serenity that we've enjoyed for a long time. So, I would say to you, how would you feel if this were your neighborhood, and it was unique, rural, and you wanted to keep your animals there, you wanted the peace and quiet? We don't want two-story buildings looming in our backyard where people can look in our yards. And again, it has nothing to do specifically with the church, it has to do with the fact that we want our neighborhood to stay intact.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David Hoxey?
Good evening, thank you. For the opportunity to speak here. My name is David Hoxey, I'm a resident of Little Texas. I am a new resident, I've only been there about three years comparatively. I got a couple of things that I want to touch on before I launch into what I already had prepared, is the numbers on, the numbers on the parking, they keep saying we're giving them more than any, more than we're required, more than required, it's not true. If you look at the slide that they provided, they're, the math is bad. There's two things going on, mezzanine and a new building. They're using one number for both of those new projects. So, they actually need 196 parking spaces for what they're trying to achieve, not the 156 they're trying to sell. Just I would encourage you to review those numbers. Another thing, their security people, they don't do a whole lot, and, you know, I'm glad they're trying, but they're not doing a whole lot. It's honest to know, most of the time, I come to understand that one of them was actually hit by a car during the parking rush, so there's, now there's a public safety concern there too, aside from the emergency vehicles not being able to get through if there were an emergency. I'm in the real estate business, and one thing I've learned is to cop it out. So, today I copped it out. What do the churches do when they run out of space? Well, they buy a new piece of dirt, they use the old ones as a satellite, and they build a bigger place on a bigger site that can accommodate them. You cannot un-outgrow yourself, the space is just not big enough. And God bless them for continuing to grow. You know, I actually am really in awe at the exponential growth of this church, it's really, really a beautiful thing. I appreciate that, I love it, I'm a believer myself. And in this landscape of Christianity, where more and more churches are decreasing, it's really, really heartening to see that happening in their, you know, in their situation, the growth. At this time, I want to read from a resident who couldn't attend. And her name is Joan Tedesco, she's a thirty-seven-year resident, maybe forty-seven-year. Said, "To whom may concern, I am a homeowner impacted by this proposed project, and I wish to go on record as to my opposition to this project. I have attended most of the previous meetings with the church and listened to the parishioners talking about their spirituality and their education without ever mentioning any benefit to the residents being impacted by their expansion. I am educated, as any of these people, this is irrelevant to the issues at hand. The site will always be too small for the church. Expansion can happen here only if they intrude into our neighborhood. Yes, they need a place to congregate, the proposal plan is just the beginning. I have seen their master plan. If taken to fruition, our lifestyle will be destroyed along with our property values." Thank you for the chance to speak.
Thank you, David. Okay, now I have Amy Fuente, and Amy is going to speak. Karen Nagai, and Hart Jimenez have yielded their time to Amy. So, Amy, you have nine minutes to speak on your.
Here, is an album. Sorry, I already had it up here.
Can somebody help her?
Yeah.
Please.
It's right here. Oh, yep, there it is. And it's. Yeah, there it is.
To build a large church. Ready? Yeah. Hi, my name's Amy, I'm from Little Texas. I have been there for roughly twenty-four years. I was raised there, grew up there. We've compiled a small video, which we're going to present today.
Now, this neighborhood really bothered us. And traffic blocks, we can't go in there now on the Sunday morning, that very, very tight traffic.
Back in nineteen eighty-three, a local congregation was authorized to use a home for church uses. However, the city later found that church members did not comply with the conditions of approval, and the city placed restrictions on the local church. Four years later, in nineteen eighty-seven, this same church requested to build a large church and a fifty-foot tower in the local neighborhood known as Little Texas. To address local neighborhood concerns of already present parking issues, the church agreed to provide a hundred and two local parking spaces, with street parking intended to allow for full occupancy of one level of the two-floor facility. Upon a compromise with local neighbors and the planning commission, the church was allowed to be built. Between nineteen ninety-four to two thousand nineteen, the church has submitted plans to expand and to allow for simultaneous use of their facilities, a condition that was placed by the previous planning commission's decision for consistently not complying with their conditional permit. Now in two thousand nineteen, the church plans to demolish five large, single-family homes, a nearly double in square feet. Modifications will add an additional one hundred and ten seats. According to church representatives, at max, only eleven church member vehicles can be found in the neighborhood, while locals know this to be false. The following clip was taken Wednesday of last week, September fourth. Locals argue that with parking an issue now, an additional one hundred and ten seats will only exacerbate the issue. The church's solution to the roughly one hundred and sixty-eight vehicles parked in the neighborhood adjoining streets is to invite an additional one hundred and ten new members into the church, while only offering fifty-five new parking spaces.
Since December two thousand eighteen with my family. And we really love our neighborhood, but it is an issue when the church members come and park my, they park right in front of my driveway, or like my mailbox. And the mailbox is a big issue because the mailman won't leave mail in there if there's a car blocking it. And it's also an issue when I have to go to work, and sometimes it's in the middle of the day, and I have to go to work in the middle of the day, and I can't get out because there's a car on both sides blocking my driveway. And I've seen them block other neighbors' driveways as well as the mailbox. So it is really inconvenient, and they're very rude. I've left notes asking them not to park here, or at least not to block my mailbox, but they don't care. Still have a security guard who's like on top of it, but he's not. I've seen him once, and he was just standing over in that corner, not doing anything, and watching people even cross through other people's lawns. And, you know, they don't, he doesn't do anything about it.
February eighth, two thousand nineteen, tragedy struck when a neighborhood home caught fire. Not only are our fire hydrants routinely blocked by church members, but emergency vehicles will be unable to respond due to the amount of illegal parking in our fire lanes.
Our neighbors are like family. We've been to each other's birthday parties, weddings, quinceañeras, all kinds of celebrations. We invite each other, we've had lot parties. It's just been a close-knit neighborhood. Now we have severe parking issues. Not only can we not get emergency vehicles down the street, but we can't have our parties anymore because there's no place for anybody to park. On holidays, it's impossible for us to have family over and have them park because the streets are already blocked. The cars speed up and down the street, they leave trash, they make rude gestures to the neighbors as we drive by. It's out of control.
Perfect. So I actually, I am Mexican. I'm very proud of that fact. My neighbors are from different diverse backgrounds. I'm next to Asians, Blacks, all kinds of people. We have Black parties, we respect different forms of religion, different forms of ethnicities, and I don't understand how racism can be brought to this conversation. If anything, I was the one followed in a car. I was the one taking photographs of them blocking a driveway, and I was honked at, and I had to run away to my house. I'm not a vocal person, I don't believe in going against a church. I believe against going to people that have been violent or aggressive, to me and my family. Twenty-four years is a long time to live in that home, to be raised there. My nephew's being raised there. We don't have, we shouldn't be pushed around just because we don't own those five lots. What they should do is fix the parking issue and don't just create more parking issues by adding an additional hundred and ten people. They don't have enough parking as it is. It's not right, it's something I disagree with, and thank you so much for your time.
Are you done, Amy?
Yes, I'm done.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Bill Lawson. I'm here frankly introducing myself. We prepared the traffic study. I'm a principal at Urban Crossroads and a registered traffic engineer. The traffic study essentially finds that we satisfy code without the concurrent use of both the mezzanine as well as the community service building. I'm just here for any questions specific to the traffic study, and that's all I have to add. Thank you.
Thank you. George Belter?
Thank you. Good evening. Okay, so we're going to touch on parking real quick. You've heard it all. It's no, no problems when churches aren't in service. Churches in service, everything is a problem. So, these are the intersections and blind corners that constantly get parked in, ignored. We've heard all this stuff. So, my main concern is that the people proposing this giant expansion are frankly tone deaf and really have no interest in doing what's best for the community. You've heard about the temporary signage? That's your temporary signage. You know, disgraceful, letting, it just says, no, yeah, it's just, it's ridiculous. It's not only left there, when that signage was there, it wasn't only left there during services, they left it there for days. And who pays attention to that? You know, the properties that the church maintains oftentimes are, have derelict vehicles, have tons of problems. Jump ahead a little bit. They claim that we haven't wanted to work with them in the neighborhood. Ten years ago, we proposed an option for them to keep their existing structure and turn two of the properties that they have into parking areas. Would alleviate all the problems. They don't have people jaywalking, crossing Edinger, a busy street. Everybody wins. But the church just out of hand said, "No, that's not a viable option," frankly, for a reason that I don't understand. Pictures of derelict vehicles in the properties that they maintain, eight derelict vehicles just in the Google map, like in their properties. I mean, these guys are terrible stewards of the neighborhood. It's furniture that sits there for days, if not weeks, you know? It's, it's just ridiculous. So, you know, this coupled on, you know, we're within a mile or so of an elementary school, a junior high, and a, and a high school. So we get a share of graffiti and whatnot, but fortunately, this household, they take care of it right away. You know, my fear is if they build this prison wall in our, in our homes, or next to our homes, that's going to separate the church from the community. Right now, they have some sort of interest into keeping the community at least somewhat satiated, which is why you don't have countless noise complaints. Because frankly, after twenty-something years, we've just resigned ourselves, said this is just the way life is. We get to hear them dullering late into the night, you know, their P A system's going crazy, you know, whatever, whatever else we have to deal with. Kids playing in the court. Is that my three minutes? Okay, here, let me do one thing real quick if I can wrap this up. So this is what I, this is what I look at when I get home. With the proposed demolition of the housing, almost ten percent of this neighborhood, you know, this is what I'm going to be looking at when I go home. Just ridiculous. So, and it's your job to prevent stuff like this.
Thank you for allowing us to speak. That was my son. He was born there, and we're still there, we're right next to the church. I mean, we are, we share a wall. And I love Father Philammon. Mentioned me in his, and it was us that actually wanted the church there. We had no idea that it would be such a major, major problem that they would continue to grow and that the noise level would be like Dante's seventh circle of hell. But we just put up with it. But if it grow, they have not been good stewards. My son took that picture. But they own the house behind us, they own two houses on Warner, which probably amounts to a good acre, acre and a half, and they could have made those parking lots already. Nothing to it. But they don't. In fact, they fenced off one of them now for no reason whatsoever. They use it for derelict cars, the weeds have grown as tall as I am, or as tall as he is, and it's not very pretty. So I don't see any difference in the way that they're going to take care of it once and if they have the expansion, if they're going to do it any better than they do now. I don't think so. And it's just going to become worse and worse. They've outgrown the area, and that's the way it should be.
Thank you, Rob. Judy Stevenson?
Hi, thank you for your time. I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, nor do I have a pitchfork or a torch, just want to make sure you know that. The thing is, this hasn't been going on for a year, or two, or ten, it's been going on for thirty. And like you mentioned earlier, none of it's changed. The problem is, they're bigger than they probably thought they would be, and there's no room for expansion into the neighborhood. You saw on the video, I have pictures, they either had, or the city had some curbs painted red, they park in the red. It doesn't matter. They park, there's an entire area on Edinger that's no stopping, they park. There's bus stop, they block the bus. The security guard blocks the bus stop. So, none of the last six months' worth of efforts have improved anything. You're exactly right. It's, it's how it was when we were here before. No improvement, and it shouldn't go forward. Thank you.
Debbie Sever?
Thank you for taking the time tonight for us. I've been at this since nineteen eighty-eight. I've been a resident, owner of Little Texas, a little slice of heaven in Santa Ana. There's not another little area like this. Couple of things, we've listened to the church over and over. They have not been good neighbors. They continue to not be good neighbors. The same issues we were arguing with nineteen eighty-eight, ninety-seven, two thousand and three, two thousand and four, the same promises that they've made, they continue to not comply with it. There is a red zone now, they did, there was some red zone painted, they park in it. We have forty-two pictures that we sent in, and it's not just on holy week, it's on last Sunday. I don't know if last Sunday was a special event, but they blocked the fire hydrant. fire hydrants. There's pictures, there's evidence of this. It's not just a Holy Week issue or a special event. This is a congregation that came before the city council thirty years ago, and they said they were a small church, and they just wanted a place to worship. God bless them. They've outgrown the footprint they're in. It's time for them to move on and find another place that they can continue to expand and do the good works that they do. It was disheartening to hear them refer to us as a mob mentality or racist. This is a culturally diverse neighborhood. We've been friends. These are good neighbors we have in here. We love one another. This church is not a good neighbor. This spewing of the hatred towards us, it's, it was hard to hear. Because that's not the way this neighborhood believes. We are a loving, kind, accepting neighborhood. We just want our peace and tranquility back. Why do we have to keep coming here for thirty years with the same complaints? The city council that initially approved this, they expressed in open chambers that they regretted their decision to allow this church to go forward. Pat McGuigan, who recently passed, she expressed it over and over again. She was so sorry that she did this. She was part of what happened to our neighborhood. So, I just ask you, just take a look at our neighborhood. We're not asking for a lot. We just want our quiet neighborhood back. We want to have good neighbors. And honestly, the church, they're not a good neighbor. We've asked them to be. We've given them options. They just don't want to be a good neighbor. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. The next person I have is, I'm going to be very truthful on this. DeGeorge Rackey. Three people have yielded their time to you. Mark Bussor, Jacob Sampson, and Johanna Penavir?
Yes.
Okay, so we have twelve minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Vice Chairwoman, and respected commissioners. I represent Archangel Michael Coptic Orthodox Church. What I've seen tonight is quite amazing. What I've heard from our neighbors is quite discouraging. They say that we have been bad neighbors. We have been excellent hosts. They say that we spew hatred. We love everybody. What we have seen tonight is a real disgrace. And I think the problem is much simpler than what is being presented. I think, Mrs. Vice Chairwoman, you've said parking. Mr. Chairman said, "What has happened to bridge the viewpoints of the neighbors and the church?" And I think I'd like to let you know that a lot has transpired. To bring our views closer, we have listened to what the staff has recommended. They said, "Find alternative parking solutions in the meantime to lighten the load on parking." We have done so. We have two local schools that we pay to use their parking lots during the weekend. They said, "Do even more." We said, "Great, we will do even more." We have went and rented a school bus to go around the city and the various areas where we have our Sunday School kids. And they collect these children to avoid having the parents to come and drop their kids on Saturday evening. So, we can just bring the kids to church, let them learn the Word of God, and be better people. And then the bus will take them back home. They said, "Bring somebody that's independent, that can patrol the streets and count the cars." We have the documentation. It is documented by a third mutual party that the city staff hired, that we have nothing to do with it. We were not, I don't know if you know or not, when the city conducted the traffic report and the parking study, we were not part of the game. We were told to stay out. And the city will utilize some of their staff to ensure the impartiality of the report. We've done exactly so. We stayed out. They came back clearly with no negative impact on parking or on traffic. There is a huge misunderstanding. If you just, anybody would listen to us. And please, this is disgusting. I don't want to see a fabricated picture on the screen. Please, can somebody take this down? We're not, you don't need to waste your time with fabricated pictures. Let's talk reality. Reality is, since Father Philammon has taken over the church, we have built ten other churches in Orange County. The whole idea of a church is, as it grows, you move the people to another church. As they grow, you break a piece and you move it over. We've done that nine times. We are not growing. We are not bringing more members. This is not South Coast Plaza. Let's bring, you know, a Kim Kardashian store in for the holidays. This is here permanently. And the members are not growing. As they grow, we create other churches. The whole idea of keeping a church together is service, love, and shepherding their flock to salvation. I can't do that if I'm overbooked, if I'm overwhelmed, if I'm overoccupied, then I'm lying to my people, then I'm cheating my people, which as they've said, they all have been impressed with the congregation of Archangel Michael. So, this old man, Father Philammon, must be doing something right. Because the people are good. The people are here. But we have developed ten other churches. The congregation is not growing. We simply want a bigger footprint for the services we currently provide. The documentation is clear and very precise. Number of cars parked at six-thirty in the morning would clearly demonstrate they're not our people. We have no services at six-thirty in the morning. I'm highly offended by the picture that they have displayed on Wednesday. Would you like to know what was going on in our church Wednesday? A thirty-two-year-old only child, orthopedic surgeon, in his fourth year of residency, was killed, and that was his funeral. Yes, even the people that didn't know the parents felt sorry and wanted to go console them on the death of their only child. At thirty-two-years-old, fourth-year residency at UCI. Those are our children. Those are the people that Father Philammon raises. Good people, hardworking, good neighbors. There has never been an opportunity that we were allowed to have an open house, except that we have done a marvelous job, tried to welcome our neighbors. They need to understand, we're not adding more people. The cars that are on the street, as Vice Chairwoman has asked, they will be taken off the street. Now, we will be able to park them in our newly-developed parking lot as well. We will continue to pay for the two school parking lots. Our goal is the same goal as the neighbors. We want to take these cars off. But we cannot tolerate fabricated pictures. And everybody have emergencies. You have emergencies, Mr. Chairperson. You have emergencies, Mrs. Vice Chairwoman. Commissioners, you have emergencies. We all do. Wednesday was an emergency. Yes, if you didn't know those people, you wanted to go and say, "I'm sorry you lost your only son." I think it's the only decent thing to do, that we console those people in time of need. That we don't, you know, kind of shy away and walk away and say, "It's none of our business." No, it is our business. We're Christians. We're Orthodox. We support each other. Today, we need to understand, the whole idea is, we don't want to bother our neighbors. We want to solve the problem. We have a solution. It's just nobody wants to listen. Everybody is focused on the idea, you will build a new building, you will have new people. We won't. We won't. Fifty-one weeks out of the year, there are no complaints. An allegation that fire trucks could not go through in, in a state of emergency, I think we would have gotten a huge ticket if that was true. Or at least it would have been written up in the paper. Or at least a police officer would have come to the church and complained or given us a ticket. Staff have stated, and Selena has stated repeatedly, there are no code violation incidents documented against the church. Staff has been very cautious and careful, and have documented that project very well, and has worked very diligently with the church and with the neighbors. Commissioners, you cannot be bogged down when you represent a city of Santa Ana with a complaint of four, or five, or seven people, when the church has done everything possible to accommodate everybody around us. But as we all know, we cannot accommodate everybody. We would love to. We have tried. We've submitted that project in two thousand and three, and multiple times also as well before that. And today, we really need this approval because we need to resolve the parking problem. The main reason is a small two-story building, but the majority of the work is going to be to resolve the parking situation. And as staff has stated, we only need a hundred and forty-five parking spaces. We're providing a hundred and fifty-six. I think everybody knows, churches don't grow. Churches try to maintain their same level of congregations. And with us, we won't be able to grow because there are other American churches, Coptic Orthodox, but English-speaking for the youth that are getting built around us in Orange County. We have four now that allow the youth to go and learn Coptic Orthodoxy in English, where all the prayers are in English. Where in Archangel Michael, we pray one liturgy in English, but the majority of our services are in Arabic. So, as a result, one more reason, there will be no additional members coming to our church. Father Philammon has stated that just less than five miles away, around three years ago, we spent three-point-seven million dollars and built Pope Kirolo's Coptic Orthodox Church at eight-six-four-two Westminster Boulevard. All these people came from Archangel Michael, and they went over there. The whole goal is to have a small group of a congregation that the number of priests we have can service, can care for, and can love, and be able to handle. The idea is not, we're not a mall. The more they come, the better they are. No, we have to care and worry about every member of our church. As a result, there is no more people coming to our church. There will be no more cars because of this new building. There will be no new cars because we will open the mezzanine in the church. We've had it locked since the church was built. Yes, we would love to open it. Yes, in special circumstances, or special events as they call them, Christmas Eve, Easter Eve, and Epiphany's Eve, yes, those are three nights that we have night liturgies that are very special to our church and to our congregation. We would love to accommodate more people in the church and open the mezzanine. But I don't think we have a major problem, except on Holy Week, where everybody, you know, takes pictures and makes allegations that we are threatening their safety, blocking their driveways, littering on the street, all things that are not fair at all, to a group of people that have worked very hard to build their church and have labored to be good neighbors. We've tried to have community meetings. And you know what happened? As my colleague has stated, and Selena's boss is a witness of what she has been called. And if you want, you can call Selena and ask her if that took place or not. Thank you, and we hope you approve our project. Thank you, Mr. Chairwoman.
You've already spoke, in all fairness, in all fairness to the applicant, you used your time. We have another speaker here. You cannot yield your time to the same person that spoke. Okay? If they've spoke already, all right, if we could just have one discussion going here, and I'm going to discuss this at this time. So, if you want to give your time to someone else, it is someone else that hasn't spoken. Okay? Clear?
Chair.
One more card in front of you.
Chair, I'd like to clarify that the applicant will get a five-minute rebuttal period after all the speakers have spoken.
Patrick? Is it Goldberg?
I will not take too much of your time. My name is Monica, and I'm going to be speaking on behalf of the church. Patrick is yielding his time to me.
Patrick, you're yielding your time to...
Sure. Monica Youssef. And I am a Sunday School teacher at Archangel Michael.
You're also at the end. Please fill out a card.
I will. I will. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to start by apologizing. Okay, there is a lot of emotions here today. And I think something that was said earlier has really struck a chord, which is calling other people racist. Okay? That is not what was meant. That is not what was meant by that comment from Mira. There was an incident that happened, but we are not calling all of you racist. You are our neighbors. You have experienced racism. We have experienced racism. That is not what we're talking about here, but I do want to apologize. If that came off wrong earlier, please accept our apology. The second thing I'd like to, to add, that Father Philammon wanted to add, so I'm speaking on his behalf. This center, okay, we've, we've kind of lost touch of why we're building it. The first issue is parking. So, our neighbors agree with us on that. There is a parking issue. We're not saying there isn't a parking issue. We completely agree. We have a parking issue. We have grown. Okay? We have now tried to remedate, remediate, remedy that issue. Okay? We have done all the things that we have said we've done to remedy that issue. But we are also trying to build this space in order to remedy that issue. But our neighbors are now kind of digging in their heels. They're not coming up with any other solutions. We have done everything they have asked. The other thing that this project is for is the community center, which we have not discussed at all. This community center is for one group of people. Those are not newcomers. Those are not people we are going to evangelize, okay, to come to the church. We don't do any of that. That group of people is sitting here. It is our youth that are spending their Monday night, for whatever reason, sixteen-year-olds all the way to college, to come and support their church. So, when the neighbors ask, "What are we doing for the community?", this is what we're doing for the community. These kids are not on the street. Okay? These kids are literally coming to spend their time at church, okay, not doing drugs, not at the liquor store down the street, not being picked up by police officers in Santa Ana. They are literally coming to make packages for the homeless of Santa Ana. That is what we're doing for the community. That is what we have been doing for the community. There's at least thirty of them here. When do you get thirty sixteen-year-olds coming to support a church for a community center? I think the main issue here is that the church has shown excellent faith, not just good faith, in the past at least six months to try to solve this issue with our neighbors. I understand the neighbors don't want the community to change. But the community does not look like what it looked like in nineteen eighty. Okay? The community has a Coffee Bean that just got built a couple of years ago. Were they here to tell Coffee Bean that they couldn't go into the community? There's a Coffee Bean, there's a Taco Bell, there's a Panda Bowl. There is multiple commercial areas that are currently in our neighborhood. Okay? All we are, all we are saying is we want to build this community center for the youth to stay in church, not on the streets, and for us to fix our parking problem. Thank you.
Any of the cards of this... Have you filled out a card?
I think that... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Patricia Young. And I live on Regent Drive, right around the corner from the church. I've lived there... I've lived there for 30 years, 40 years. And I think that a large part of this problem is that the city planning department has encouraged the neighbors and actually insisted that the neighbors, if they have any problems, take pictures and complain. And what that does is it pits us against the congregation of this church. And that's never what we wanted, ever. We just wanted the problems that occur as a result of the church to be solved. They want to expand, and they say, oh, we're not growing. And then other members of the church say, well, yes, of course, we're growing. It's confusing. We're saying they have outgrown the footprint that they have created for their church. Don't let them expand. Find a better, more appropriate property for them to have a school. It'd be wonderful if they continued all their efforts in a place where they could grow and expand and have elementary school, middle school, high school, sports fields. That would be very nice. And that's all we're saying is that look at our neighborhood and also the parking that they say they're going to provide. That is all based on a conditional use permit that says they will only use one structure building at a time, and there's nobody to police that. And based on our prior experiences, we don't feel secure about that. And we don't want to be the people policing them. You say there's no code enforcement problems? Well, that's because there's no one from the city really watching what's going on. The city tells the neighbors, you take the pictures, you complain, and you tell us. Do you know what it's like to walk around the streets with the congregation going out to their cars or leaving their cars to go into the church, and we're snapping pictures? It creates a lot of fiction. And you can see that they are vocal, enthusiastic people, and we're not. I can't even really think of anyone in our neighborhood who is, matches that level of intensity, but it is intimidating. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else at this time that would like to speak? Would you come down and fill out a card after you've spoken? You have three minutes. And if there's anybody else that wants to speak after this gentleman, there'll be a chance for the applicant to respond to some of the things that happened, that were discussed at this point in time at the end. Anybody else that wants to speak after this gentleman, please come up here and fill out a card now. If not, after the applicant speaks, we're closing the public hearing.
Yeah, I didn't fill a card. My name is Bassam Bersum. I'm representing, I'm the Sunday, one of the Sunday School teachers in Archangel Michael. Also by profession, I'm a traffic engineer for the past 22 years in the state of California. I understand, I deal with traffic issues on a day-to-day basis. This is really my sort of living, actually, since I came to Orange County. So I was in the Bay Area. If you look around, all your freeways around you, all traffic-related issues come through me in Orange County. So very familiar with what traffic. I have great sense for the neighbor as far as the parking, and that's why I'm pleased. I've been raised in this church for the past 20-plus years, and in that time, I've been serving this congregation, the same number of people that are the kids that were thinking that they're different people, they're the same people that are going to be using that new facility. That facility, there is a church going on at the same time, and then later on, maybe half of the church leave, then the youth are staying behind. Or maybe half of them coming at another event. As far as one of the key issues, again, I want to reemphasize, as the parking is an issue, we do understand that, and as we're generating a lot of parking above and beyond the trip generation that's required by law, it's not only enough. We're still going above and beyond by going to the school, going to shattling services. I want to remind the chairman and all the team members, everybody that's listening in, truly, we want to be a good neighbor. We've been, I mean, Father Filimon mentioned how the prosecution has been elsewhere for the same community, and we hate when we feel to be prosecuted in the U.S., and that's the land of liberty that we felt. We belong, we own this land as everybody else, right? And we have equal rights, and as well as the importance of us having this home to help the community. And with that, thank you so much.
Thank you. And would you fill out a card, please? Is there anyone else that's going to speak at this point in time? Come on up.
Forty-year resident. My name is Glenn Young. I just filled out a card for you. Wasn't planning on speaking, but, you know, I listened to the neighbors there, and I'm just super disappointed tonight. Forty years of living there. We have a wonderful community. I wish you guys would come over and look at it, you know, to see the horses and the animals there and everything. You just don't see that anywhere. You got to drive to Riverside or way out there. And we opposed the original church, and we had, not because of anything to do with church, we're Christians as well, most of us. It was just we didn't want our neighborhood to change. It wouldn't, like Pat Wells said earlier, it really doesn't have anything to do with the church or being against church people. We have our own religion, too, so we respect that. It's just it wasn't a good fit for our neighborhood, and we knew congregations grow because that's what a successful church does. It grows. So we could never figure out, if you look at the pictures, those giant pictures, and try to figure out how that fits in our neighborhood, I would just like you to come out and take a look, you guys, and see what it would be like if it was next door to you or whatever. So we've been trying to fight so hard, and we feel like the city has never been on our side. They're just trying to push getting more things built, permits, whatever, but where are the, we used to have some council members, they're long gone, some of them passed away. They used to fight for us. We have nobody to fight for our wonderful little Texas community. It means a lot to us. We've been there, I've been there four decades. But what disappoints me more than anything is to hear the opening dialogue by one of their church members that we're a mob and to use the word racism today. It's just very hurtful. We have a very diverse population around there, and, you know, we don't see color, culture, any more than anybody else does that we don't do intentionally. But that really hurts. And I think when you started this today and you said, I don't really see, like, we've gone anywhere. We had six months to do this. We don't have any resolution, any ideas or anything. If you guys would come out on the weekends and see, you wonder why with what they want to do, how could they still be parking where they're parking? It doesn't make any sense to me. If they want to try to get this through, why is it our job to police this? And to hear those opening comments, even though, I think her name's Monica, tried to pull them back and said, well, if you thought we meant that, we really didn't. You heard what was said. I just can't believe that card would be placed when you're asking the community and the church to come together and find resolution. How does that display, that opening monologue, calling us a mob and that? How is that bridge the gap that we're going to fix the problem? Okay? It's disappointing. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay. No one else has submitted a card at this point in time? Would the applicant like to respond to what was discussed?
We will have final comments.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioners, I think what we heard tonight is there is one important, two points, two points that we want to bring home tonight. One, the building will be used at separate times. So we need to make that very clear. If there is a liturgy or a service going in the main building, there probably will not be activity at the new building. We need to get that across very clear. So as a result, the number of people will be limited to one building, and they will move to the other building. Or some people will leave, and others will go to the new building. The other point, and it's very important, parking. If you let us go ahead with this project, we will be able, between our 156 parking spaces inside our land, as documented by city staff, as well as we continuing to use the elementary school parking lots, there should be no neighborhood parking whatsoever. And those numbers are documented in the traffic study and in the parking study. They can tell you exactly how many cars are parked in the neighborhood every Sunday on every hour. We have those numbers, and we've shared them with staff, and they're available for your review. We will be able to park all the cars inside our building, and we won't have much neighborhood parking. And I think that will resolve the main point that Madam Vice Chairwoman raised earlier, is there a parking plan? And I think the staff has recommended annual review of the operation of the church. All things that we are willing to work together on, once this project is developed and built, we can work together to enhance the operation of the project and how we coexist. Thank you.
Anything you want to say?
I just want to repeat that the neighbors were not willing to engage with us to discuss these conditions. Nobody was willing to listen. We proposed, we asked for opinions, we were trying to have a productive meeting, and that was exactly not, that didn't happen. And Candida was present for that, and she can attest to what she witnessed. I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So at this point in time, we're going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
Chair.
Please, if you want, double one.
Yes, if I may, I just wanted to remind you of the ARLUPA, the federal law, which is the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. And that act bars government land use restrictions that impose a substantial burden on the religious exercise of a religious assembly or institution unless the government can demonstrate that the imposition of the burden is in furtherance of a compelling governmental interest and is the least restrictive means of furthering that compelling interest. So I'd like you to keep that in mind as you discuss the matter.
No. Go ahead.
And I appreciate that. And can you tell us in layman terms what that means, then?
We can't put a substantial burden on the religious institution unless we have a compelling governmental interest. So the governmental interest that seems most discussed here tonight is parking, and so you have to look at the least restrictive means of furthering that compelling interest of parking. So we have added, staff has added many conditions to this CUP to try to address that compelling governmental interest of the parking concerns. You can add additional conditions. You can discuss this, however, a flat-out refusal would not be the least restrictive means of addressing the parking issue. There's case law that substantiates that.
Does anyone on the commission have any questions? Comments?
I'll try this out. Maybe I will cross the boundaries of what was said right now, but please correct me if I did. So just going through what the comments were, I am still concerned about the contract with New Hope because it is annual, so that might end at any point. We don't know how, and then we don't know in the future how that might affect the community. We also, with the patrols, we do have a community center coming in, so I'm sure other community members will try to use it. I don't know how the church has worked on that or how they plan on work. I did not hear that. So I just feel like we gave six months to come with a resolution. Even Cynthia mentioned parking permits. That was not discussed, and it would have been a good faith for the church to even pay for those parking permits to allow the community to do their own thing. But I do feel that the church was a guest at this community, and they've been welcoming, the city has been welcoming, and it is a capacity, and that's just the way I see it.
So recently, we had a project that came across here, 2525, as many of you might know of. And a big issue of that project was preservation of the community, for me. And I stated that verbally. Santa Ana is extremely unique that we have these pockets of neighborhoods that are different, that are historical, and we try our best to preserve them. And that's kind of where I get stuck because the construction would now, you know, loom over the neighborhood. And that's kind of where I conflict because business has the right to do their business. Our city is telling us they're meeting all requirements. But then we hear residents, and I'm a resident, and if that was going in my neighborhood, I have to think about that, too. So I agree with Angie that when you want to show good faith, you don't just respond when you're asked to do something. When you want to show good faith, you do everything possible. And I'm actually quite bothered by the fact people showing up, residents, people coming into community and lashing out at one another. I just don't find that constructive at all. It's disheartening, and instead of working to a better goal, to better the community and the church community, it stalled. And that's where I'm at. I just wanted to share that.
Okay. A couple of things I want to comment on, and that is, first of all, I want to say, you know, one gentleman was up here and explained all the things that were being done and had been done, and the contracts that were being signed, and everything else. I look at that and say, you executed those things that everybody talked about. But the real question comes down, the real fact comes down, even though you executed, were you effective in executing? So having a contract with a school, an elementary school, to have 100 parking spaces available on a Sunday is one thing. But if those 100 spaces are filled, not your time, your time is done. Okay? We've closed the public hearing. I want to be clear about that. Public hearing is closed. Now it's back to the commission. Allow us to speak. Okay? So my point is the effectiveness. And I don't see that there was effectiveness in all cases, not necessarily in every case, but I don't see it happening across the board, and I see that that's one of the fallacies and problems that exist even today. I also heard the comment that was said, this thing is very difficult to talk about, is that when you have two facilities and you're sharing the parking, and you're going to say, we're not going to have this facility running when the other facility is running. So if people are in the church, they're not going to be in the community center and vice versa. Except there was an interesting word that was used in depicting that no more than five minutes ago, and it was probably, they wouldn't be, probably, they wouldn't be used at the same time. And so when you say probably, it tells me that there is a potential, not... Again, I appreciate your handsake, Father, I do, but you have to allow us to speak. If I can't have that courtesy, then I will ask you to leave. Okay? That's a courtesy. That's a courtesy. I also had, there's also been a comment made about code enforcement. And the fact that, you know, you don't, you don't feel that you wanted to be ratting on your neighbor and doing things like that. But I'm going to, I'm going to throw, I'm going to throw out this right now. I had a code enforcement that's been sitting in this meeting since the very beginning. And I'd just like to ask him as a question whether or not, you know, this area has any more or greater or less code enforcement issues than other different neighborhoods in the city. Alvaro? I don't want to put you on the spot, but yeah, but you are. But I can do that for you.
Well, we'll recognize what the, the reaction is. A lot of the practices, you don't have to act as being more than a year or so. And we could have maybe like a few years ago. And as a question, if you're going to be, you know, you don't have any overcome things, right? So nothing like that people rat, like there's concerns. It'd be here to respond to the complaints, right? And in fact, whatever the, any person decides, in their condition, right? It's essential that both the people in church and residents and of course the city are working properly to make sure those, whatever, positions are right are being, are here. And that would require that, that everybody, doing that, people that are calling, right? Important, right? What it goes to responsible complaint, they're not there to make sure that the allocation of the cost is comfortable, right? Equal validated, if there's a violation of the municipal, never. They do complain, but it's not a violation of the, of the code that you don't ever. That's the responsibility.
Thank you, Alvaro. Didn't mean to put you on the spot. Thank you. Excellent explanation. So getting back to my, my last comment here, that is, is that, you know, again, you know, we did, things have been done. But it, it still seems that the effectiveness of what's been done is not, you know. The other side of the question and statement that's being made is, well, approve this and we'll figure out, and we'll figure out a way to make it happen so that it doesn't present a problem. But the other thing I hear from people in the neighborhood is that it's been a problem and an issue for more than just six months or a year as your, as your population has grown. And then there's another comment that came out several times in the last discussions. And that is, your population is not growing because people are going to other churches that you've started up. So you've got the same number of people. But functionality of, the functionality of what you're doing on the grounds is changing. And that could bring more people. And so I'm going to go back to my original thought in this statement is that I don't believe that we have really put together a parking management plan that works. And I don't want to spend another six months because I agree with Father that, you know, the fact is, is that if we delay the process, it is money out of your pocket. And I fully understand that. And I, and I don't want to sit there and try to take more money to, you know, solve this thing. But I just don't feel comfortable right now moving forward on this particular item, allocating some kind of concrete plan from a parking standpoint that solves some of the problems. It's not going to solve all the problems. I don't see. If we, if we try to solve every single problem that was discussed here tonight, half of us won't even be alive in this room in 30 years. I saw you wave your hand over there. So I mean, I just, I just think that we've got to come to some better conclusion, better situation than we have today. And, and, you know, I'll, I, I agree with Cynthia. And that is, is that, you know, one of the challenges that we've had with planning commission in the last couple of years is that, you know, neighborhoods like Little Texas, neighborhoods like Parkside, you know, Parkside, some of these other neighborhoods in the city are, you know, being changed significantly. And the culture, I mean, you know, the comment was made by somebody, it's a historic, it's a historic district. Well, it's not really a historic district, but there's a lot of history behind Little Texas. As is, you know, Flore Park, most of Flore Park is not a historic neighborhood. But there's a lot of history behind those neighborhoods. And I think we have to consider that as a city because neighborhoods have been the fabric of this city for a long time. So that made my statement, you might ask for more time?
So maybe I might be getting ahead of myself. But even just some, some of the stuff that Angie brought up was things like parking permits or finding other ways to kind of, I guess, alleviate the issue. And may, maybe an idea or something that could be brought up is maybe converting that, that lot, that northeast lot into a parking space for the meantime, like kind of getting it going. So there is that more parking prior to building the rest of the, the, the community center and all that other stuff, but kind of getting something going. So you're, you are alleviating some of that parking. Maybe that's, I mean, looking at the plan. If you start with that lot first, that might alleviate a lot. And then we can move forward with the rest of the stuff. But we're seeing, I guess, progress in that sense of the parking situation. So maybe that could be something that could be brought up or talked about or discussed.
Mr. Chair, based on what I heard tonight and looking at some potential opportunity in terms of parking management, I would request that give us an opportunity to work with the applicant and continue this for two weeks. There may be some opportunity for us to look at increasing the parking onsite. And also refining the parking management plan so that there's some information that would allow some specific specificity in terms of parking management. I see my staff shaking. Two weeks, is that not good timing? Four weeks, 30 days? So I see some opportunity here where we could potentially do some creative onsite parking. That would increase the supply. And we can come back with something that would hopefully increase some opportunity for management parking.
That'd be October 14th?
October 14th. Allow, do you want to do this?
Also, two weeks continuance. If we need to go four weeks, we'll ask for it at that point. But I just don't want this issue to be sitting idle. So continue for two weeks. If we need more time, we'll ask for more time.
So, so I'll make a motion that will continue it until September 23rd with the option of going to October 14th.
Thank you.
Cynthia?
Two things. Hopefully Ken will be here October 14th. But I have a major event in my life that week that I cannot get out of. And I think some of you know that, so I would do my best to be here. Number two, is there anything? I've been hearing about a block wall that would be built. Is there anything that's going to be conditioned like ivy or something to be put on it so that it's not just, you know, because the place is open and green? I don't know.
We can certainly come back with some ideas for addressing block wall issues as well.
And clearly, one of the things we have to have is not just the skeleton of the parking lot, but really meaning parking lot numbers. Concerns and concerns.
We will do, correct.
This is for?
Two weeks.
Two weeks with the option of being three weeks or four weeks, which would be October 14th versus September 23rd. So I've made the motion on that. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Felix. Is there any further discussion from the commission?
Is there any possibility in, when you sit with the church to do the parking management, that someone from the neighborhood association, the leadership of the neighborhood association be part of that? Maybe one or two people, just so that everybody feels they're putting in a piece, you know, to the solution?
Will, I mean, does Little Texas have a neighborhood association?
Do you have?
Okay, so I bet, just, so there's no president, vice president, neighborhood association? It's Little Texas is Little Texas. Okay.
If I make a request, if I make a request, all the residents present here tonight, if you want, we have a staff that can go outside, take down your name in the next couple of weeks after we have had a chance to meet with the church. We will also discuss any ideas with the neighborhood as well. So please provide with some information. It's, you know, it's some additional time based on what we heard tonight so we can at least present some additional ideas.
Great. Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion at this point?
Your time. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? 4-0. Motion to continue to September 23rd or October 14th. Thank you. Yes. Yeah. Me and a gentleman here. So just use this one too?
Yeah.
You're hired. Yeah, the current one's got to use the restroom too often, so. When someone with a bladder.
Clean up my act from time to time. All right. Can we get going? Vince, are you going to be having this little discussion here? You're the one that asked for the break. Now, give us a break and come on back.
Sorry, Mark.
No, take care, Glenn. Thank you.
Thank you for listening to us.
No, no, thank you.
Please care about the little communities. There are not that many left.
Gotcha.
It's special. Thank you, all of you.
Okay. Who's, oh, you're not presenting then. Take care of it. Ready?
Sure, I want to start.
Let's go. Three minutes.
All right. Is this still good evening or is it good night now? All right, so this next item and the last item for tonight is a zoning code amendment to the San, San Antonio Code. Um, pretty much what's being proposed is a ordinance to prohibit cyber cafes citywide and no additional changes are being proposed at this time. So, just to give you a bit of a big background in terms of what's currently happening in the city, but throughout most of Southern California, um, there has been a proliferation, I can't pronounce that right now, proliferation of cyber cafes throughout the city and throughout most of the neighboring cities. And these type of businesses kind of have shifted from what the original intent was. Um, originally, they were to provide computer services, and now with modern technology, um, these businesses have shifted and have now started to get themselves into some illegal gambling and other criminal activities. Over the past two years, code enforcement and the police department have documented over four hundred and sixty incidents and cases that have been opened. And we have approximately closed about twenty illegal cyber cafes in this, in the city. On October sixteen, twenty eighteen, the city council approved a urgency ordinance prohibiting the establishment and the operation or, or the creation of new, um, cyber cafes within the city, and that was for forty-five days. On October twenty, on November twentieth, the city council extended the moratorium for an additional, um, ten months and fifteen days. Um, with that, they directed staff to provide an analysis and review other cities ordinances to figure out a way how we could resolve these issues that are happening throughout the city. Um, so, code enforcement, planning staff, as well as PD and the city attorney's offices did a comprehensive, comprehensive analysis of the code. And at this time has determined in order to better preserve the health, public safety, and the welfare of the city and its residents, staff is recommending that we prohibit cities, or cyber cafes citywide. Um, this proposed ordinance would not impact or affect cyber cafes that are currently legally operating. They will be subject to the non-conforming ordinance. However, they would not be allowed to expand or relocate. This proposed ordinance also does not affect businesses that offer ancillary services that are similar to cyber cafes. For example, FedEx Office, Staples, those type of businesses will continue to operate. And any business that's going to be providing some type of ancillary services or like computer services or whatnot will still be allowed to operate and continue to, um, expand as needed. And just to clarify something, we also have a, a use as identify as a cyber learning center. That type of business will continue to be allowed as well as proposed. And that is for a business that's either operated by a public agency or a nonprofit agency that provides, um, the similar services that a cyber cafe offers. For example, computer services, access to the internet, et cetera. Um, with that, staff is recommending that the plant commission recommend that the city council adopt zoning ordinance amendment number twenty nineteen dash zero four. If you have any questions, I'll free answer any of your questions.
Does commission have any question, staff? Felix?
When would this start?
So, this will take effect, um, thirty days after council approves it, and council does require, uh, does require two ordinance, um, readings. So, we're taking this, if it gets approved by this body today, we will be taking it in the first, um, meeting in October. And then the second meeting will be, um, the second meeting in October for city council, and it will be enacted thirty days after that.
Thank you. Sarah, do you see that?
So, um, of the, I, how many of the four hundred and sixty items, the infractions, how many of those were closed? They all closed?
Um, these, Alvaro from code enforcement, the code enforcement manager can better answer that. Um, but these are incidents that were, either were called for services or just code enforcement cases that were opened or calls for code enforcement actioned. Um, but I believe most of the illegal, um, gambling cyber cafes that we had in the city currently are closed.
And we closed about twenty cafes at this point in time? Is that the?
To put it in a succinct manner, so we're tracking maybe thirty-six, thirty-eight properties, uh, for illegal gaming or illegal casinos. Of those, um, and according to business license, we only had that were eleven cyber cafes. Three of those are permanently closed because they weren't, they really didn't materialize, so they're different businesses. But the remaining eight that are characterized like legal non-conforming that were, um, cyber cafes are, have had illegal gaming. So, they're either, um, active illegal gaming that we're still doing enforcement on or have closed and going through the judicial process.
There, there was also a comment I, I saw in the, in the package that said that those that were, have been in place before the moratorium are exempt from this si- situation?
Well, zoning wise and the attorney.
The, the, the one that have a legal business license to operate, they will be, uh, come legal non-conforming. Meaning that they're legal now, uh, but under our code, they won't be able to expand or relocate. Um, and they can continue to do change of business as long as they stay in compliance with the law. But anytime they, they go out of compliance with our regulations, the legal non-conforming abatement process going to effect.
And how many do we think are in that area?
The legal?
Legal and non-conforming.
I would say none.
None or not?
None.
Zero.
None or the right. Either we have either active or have had illegal gaming on, uh, the remaining.
Okay. Thank you, Alvaro. Any other questions to Jerry? Jerry, thanks. Okay. So, at this point in time, we will, uh, Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this?
We have not.
Okay. We will open a public hearing and close the public hearing at this point in time since there's no one here to have a public hearing. And we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and review. Cynthia?
I'd like to propose that we adopt zoning ordinance amendment number two thousand nineteen dash zero four as proposed.
Thank you, Angie. All right. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, four zero. Candywin's absence. All right. We'll move on to staff comments.
Point, but I just want to also, uh, congrats, make a do, congratulations. As you know, we have the planning manager, um, left the city. So, on to interim, we have appointed, uh, Mr. Vincent Fregoso as interim planning manager. So, just want to give a quick shout out. Vince Fregoso.
Vince is the interim planning manager?
Yes.
Welcome, Mr. Fregoso.
After he botched up the, the discussion about liquor? Yeah, brown liquor, yeah. He's a vodka guy, I guess, you know? He's a vodka guy. Okay. Felix, anything that you'd like to comment on? No? Okay. Cynthia?
I just want to say thank you to staff because I know that sometimes we might throw curveballs out there or prolong certain things. Um, but thank you for always working with us.
Angie?
Um, congratulations, Cynthia, and thank you to, um, Cynthia just.
Okay. Um, I guess, thanks for everybody's help tonight. Tonight was a challenging discussion, and I think we all kind of saw that one coming. Appreciate the help on that. Vince, congratulations on your interim appointment there. Um, I guess the last thing I'd like to do is I'd like to reiterate that, um, you know, we're a smaller group of people. And what I would like to do is if Sarah can do this, send us a list of dates. If we, you know, just send us a list of dates through now, now through the end of the year, the calendar year, not the fiscal year. And, um, that way, everybody sees what's ahead of them and they know what's on their calendar. Because we know one position won't be filled until the position is filled from an election perspective. And the other position, we're not sure how we want to address that at this point in time. I'll have, we'll have a discussion on that tomorrow, men. Okay?
Yes, sir.
And then, um, the last thing I'd like to do is I'd like to close this meeting in honor, and it was mentioned several times tonight, in honor of Pat McWiggin, who did pass away, uh, this past week. And Pat was a council member and was the council member that represented the Little Texas area. So, I think it's only fitting that we give her acknowledgement at this point in time. Pat was a good, a great council member, and she did a lot for the city, and that we appreciate everything she did and along with her family, too. So, um, I'd like to close this meeting in honor of Pat McWiggin. And, uh, our next meeting will be on September twenty-third, and we'll meet then at five thirty. Appreciate everybody coming out and sticking around to this hour. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.